Chang, Gilliam, Kurtz, Marsh, Randolph, Shabazz, Tibbetts, Council President Small. We have a form, let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We'll now have invocation by Father John Thomas, pastor of the parish of St. Monica, Atlantic City, New Jersey.
Let us place ourselves in God's presence and ask for His blessings. Father in heaven, we are here because we believe we have the opportunity to do your work. We believe that this city council may wield its influence, its authority, for the good of your people. We ask that each resolution tonight, each ordinance will bring us one step closer, many steps closer, to contributing to your plan for this city. And Lord, if we are doing your work, we ask you to give us your help. Today, we join in celebrating birthdays and deaths for our Atlantic City residents. We ask your blessings upon all of our people, especially those who are recently departed. That you will grant them eternal light. May we especially remember Senator Whelan, our former mayor. Lord, we ask also that you will deliberate with us this evening, that you will give us your wisdom, that you will give us your guidance, that the complex issues which we face, we may face always with the knowledge of your love. That you support us, that we are not here alone, that we do not have to do this great work alone, but we do it with your help. We ask a special blessing upon all those who are working with behavioral health issues, that we may continue to strengthen our families and communities to assist those who need recovery. We rejoice in the 135th anniversary of Second Baptist Church and all the good that is done in this city. Lord, we also ask your blessing upon new arrivals, upon the Franciscan Sisters of the Renewal, and we lift up to you all of our students, many who are returning to school this week. May this city continue to be a champion for education. And finally, Lord, we lift up to you all of our hopes, many of us are hopeful for our future, for the great things happening here in Atlantic City. We ask that you will allow us to capture the excitement of the moment and to move forward with great vigor and responsibly steward these projects to completion. And let the people of God together say amen.
All right, if we can all remain standing. And just, just for the record, in case people are here in support of ordinance 12C, we're going to postpone that, awaiting further input from Mr. Whelan's wife and chaplain. And we'll entertain it at next month's council meeting. With that, I'm going to ask for an extended moment of silence for former councilman, former mayor, former assemblyman, and state senator Jim Whelan.
Adequate notice of his meeting has been provided as required by law by the city clerk sending to the press and the Philadelphia Inquirer on January 6, 2017, and published on January 9, 2017, and to the Star Ledger on January 19, 2017, and published on January 21, 2017. A list of the meetings for the council of the city of Atlantic City, including notice of the meeting scheduled for September 6, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. in the Hank Keiner Council Chambers, Room 206, City Hall, 1301 Baccarat Boulevard. And also a copy of said notice was posted by the city clerk on the bulletin board, main lobby, first floor, on the same date. All of the aforementioned complies with NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera, known as the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Law, and NJSA 40:69A-179. This is a regular council meeting of the city council of Atlantic City. Before we begin, please be aware of our rules in this chamber. All persons are to be seated unless all seats are filled, in which case you may stand against the wall in orderly fashion. We are asking that all gentlemen and sees remove their hats. All persons are to remain quiet during these proceedings. This is so that everyone is able to hear what is going on. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. No one shall speak unless they are invited to do so by the council president. Shouting, interrupting, speaking out of turn, or acting disorderly in any fashion will not be tolerated, and anyone doing so will be removed from the meeting. When and if you are invited to the microphone to speak, please state your name and address. You will be allotted three minutes for comment. Please respect the time for other persons and end your speech within the three minutes allowed. If it is your intention to ask a question of council, you will be permitted to ask a maximum of two questions. Your questions are to be clearly stated, and after the questions are asked, you are to please take your seat. The council president will determine if the question can be answered and by whom. Finally, please understand that there will be no personal attacks or name-calling. If you do so, your time will immediately be cut short, and you may be asked to leave. Reports and recommendations from the mayor, we have ordinance numbers 19, 20, and 21 of 2017, which were signed by the mayor on August 10, 2017. Council President, have we any committee reports?
Bert. Information Technology Health and Human Services Licensing and Inspections Committee met. Among the regular items that are on tonight's agenda, and which should be noted, that I'm going to pull ordinance 12E like Edward concerning the short-term rentals, something we continue to examine in and out of committee, and we're hoping to come back to the next meeting with the ordinance that addresses all the questions. But back to the committee meeting, in addition to the regular items, we also had Murray Rosenberg of Yellow Cab Company to discuss just an update on how the traditional cab situation is dealing with ride-sharing services. We also had Mark Bolner, organizer of the Two-City Farmers Markets, review the application process both for our city as well as some neighboring cities to get some ideas about how we can streamline that process. And we welcomed Chaplain Mark Engler to begin a conversation with the different social services, human services groups. We've just been noticing a large number, and I haven't seen anything scientific to see if this is, if we're breaking records these days, but it just seems to both myself and people you talk to, that there's just a lot of people who are struggling with different addictions and homelessness, and it just seems more than usual. And so, we're trying to initiate a conversation to figure out how we can better handle this because, you know, it's not just here where these problems are, but it seems that we're getting a lot of people from Ocean County, from other counties, from other cities that are coming here and are creating a situation that is just not desirable for our families. We need to really talk to the groups and the other areas about spreading this out because addiction happens everywhere, and it shouldn't just be Atlantic City where people come for treatment and to, you know, address these, these issues that they're dealing with. And that's my report.
Come before here.
Good point.
Yes, Human Resources Department updated, I think, Ms. Tucker, HR Director, and also Yolanda, for providing with these updates as we go forth through the rest of the year. I pass it out to everyone here. The HR team is in the process of planning activities and events for the 2018 enrollment cycle. Core benefit, rest will be here for medical, dental, prescription, and vision. Voluntary benefits, vendor fare will be held in City Hall during mid-October. Corporate employees' benefit will host information sessions, provide help and wellness presentations to city employees. Benefits council will be available for one-on-one counseling and benefit review. Affirmative action position is still open, and hopefully it will be filled. In the meantime, the HR department is moving forward, and we have a new MSI director, which will also assist, an HR assistant director as well. HR met with the MIS director last week, and we are excited about automating the manual workflow process as well as updating and implementing more technology in our daily workflow for department efficiencies and as a host of employee resources. HR is pleased to report that upon review of our prescription claims data by our broker CB, receiver NIC, did not have any signs of fraudulent abuse as it relates to the current prescription drug that has been reported by surrounding cities. HR is pleased to report that upon review of our prescription claims data by our broker CB, city of Atlantic City, did not have any signs of fraudulent abuses as it relates to the current prescription drug matter that has been reported by surrounding cities. The Petcher Department with assistance of Patrick Quinlan will be able to complete and submit census data for the 2017 state audit. An onsite audit will be conducted later this month. Thanks to Patrick and Shanice for job well done under a very short timeframe. Again, I'd like to thank the two ladies, you know, for really helping me in terms of providing you with information regarding our Human Resources Department. And again, I'd like to thank the administration and as well as our state representative for making sure that, you know, we got the necessary help that we needed in the HR department. I really do appreciate it.
Speedy, if you go further, just to piggyback on that, as you know, there's a cloud because Atlantic City, a few people may or may not have done some things with prescriptions, that there's a cloud over Atlantic City employees. And again, that letter proves that the good people and the good employees in Atlantic City did not use city health benefits to do any type of scandals or any type of schemes. There may be a couple that worked for us that did it through other insurance, but our good people and our employees are all good people and did not do anything. So regardless of what they read in the papers, it didn't happen with our employees through our insurance companies.
That's why we have to have it twice.
And our broker record has been on it for over a year because I called him over a year ago to watch out for any spikes in special creams and vitamins. So it's good to hear that, it's good to have it in writing now, and take that cloud off the people of Atlantic City where you have nothing to do with what's going on in the other municipalities.
And again, thanks to the administration, state, and Ms. Lanning, and Ms. Tucker, and we've been on the top of things, and again, I applaud them 100%.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety met Wednesday, August 30, and we had Mr. and Mrs. Matt from McDonald's to come in and not only talk about their restaurant, but also talk about the walk in general. They're having a big problem with panhandling, and when it came to Public Safety Committee, we really wanted to try to get some initiatives going, so probably next meeting, we will have some. I'd like to thank the police chief, both, the police chief and Chief Evans and Public Works, and everybody that was in attendance in that meeting. There is a problem, we're going to try to address it as best as we can. I also attended Councilman Kurtz's meeting, and it was the same thing. So we're all trying to get some initiatives because people need help, and we're willing to help, but we also have to help our businesses, we have to help our tours, we have to help everyone. So hopefully we will have something to roll out in our next meeting. Atlantic City Police Department, we have a resolution on tonight from Flyers, direction is for Skywatch Mobile Surveillance Mobile, and this will enhance our public safety, and it will be on tonight, and it's at a cost of $234,000, which is 100% reversible back to the city, so we will absolutely be paying nothing for it. In other words, when we give them the money, we'll get it right back. So hopefully, we can get some support for that tonight. We got a crime view presentation from Lieutenant Scanlon, it was an excellent presentation, and that presentation is called Crime View, and it's open to the public. It's a map of all the crimes that's in certain areas in the city or all the areas in the city, but it is open to the public. You can get the website, we'll give it to you, or you can get it from the safety, Public Safety Department, but I think that's a very good initiative, so not only that you know what's going on in the city, you as the public just get a chance to see exactly how our police department and the safety that they're trying to present to our citizens and to our tourists. Public Works, we're going to have a resolution for first vehicle for maintenance and repair to all city vehicles, and that will be presented tonight on this council meeting, and if there's any questions. Yeah, we have some representation here tonight, so thank you, that's my report.
Mr. Chairman, the Planning and Development Committee met on August 31, and we have several items on the agenda for consideration of my colleagues. For those people who are following the agenda, I would like to say Resolution 514, which deals with ground fields assessment program, we're going to pull that. We're vitally concerned with ground fields, but we have some more information that we need to gather, and hopefully we'll be able to move that on the next meeting. Gardeners Basin is also one of the items that we discussed, and maybe I didn't make it clear at the last meeting, one of the reasons that I believe we should move forward with Gardeners Basin is that it will be an immediate savings of $250,000 per year, and I discussed this at the meeting, my colleagues concur, this is the kind of savings that we need to make to help the taxpayers of Atlantic City. In addition to the $250 savings, because that's money that the city subsidizes the operation of Gardeners Basin for presently, we will be to the good for the amount that the lease payment is going to be. So I would encourage strongly my colleagues to support that. The vendor who we have selected through our RFP process is someone who's already been at Gardeners Basin, they have a history of development. In fact, they were in the paper this week with Mayor Tweedle in Pleasantville, they're developing a project over there. So I would encourage a positive vote on that. Additionally, we have some mortgage discharges, which are boilerplate activities, which are things that we need to, to address. And we have some grant applications, all of the grant applications are without cost to the city, and they speak to various aspects, the youth engineering services, environmental in the First Ward, and Bike Path, which is a grant that we have received, and all these grant applications are for us to receive or go out for funds, this is not costly or anything. Additionally, at our meeting, we've received a report, a West Side Re-Revotation Program. Unfortunately, many of the people in Atlantic City are still suffering from the effects of sand. A lot of people didn't have homeowners insurance or flood insurance, and we have a high incidence of vacant properties in the Third Ward. Mr. Clint Walden, City Inspector, and Donna Harrison, CBPG Program, presented a project that we will be getting information on to help bring up the Third Ward. We also have on several resolutions, one from Ms. America Pageant, everybody knows about the Ms. America Pageant, this is just a license agreement, a resolution from the Office of Administrative Law to use the city courtroom, courtroom number three, which is a no cost, a fireworks resolution on September 26, there's going to be fireworks in front of Tropicana, and we're asking the council to approve that. It has been vetted by our risk management person and also by legal. The Atlantic City Public Library, and I want to just take a minute on this, on Mr. Chair, the library can't advocate for a vote, but there is going to be a bond issue on the November ballot that is a library bond issue that will give libraries the ability to do capital improvements, and it's a one-for-one match. In other words, if a library has a project that's $100, they can do it for $50 if this bond issue passes. And I would encourage everyone out there to vote for this bond issue, to encourage your friends to vote for the bond issue, to encourage your neighbors to vote for the bond issue. The library performs a critical service for people who need the use of computers, don't have it at home. They have an outstanding team center in the library that they've gotten state grants and state acknowledgement for, and that's something I think that is very important. Lastly, we have some FEMA grants, and obviously, that's very important as we see the storms that are taking the toll in the south that we want to apply for. Mr. President, that's my report.
Mr. President.
Mr. President. Speedy saying motion to adjourn.
Council President, we've got to chime in for one second.
One thing I did forget to mention that last Thursday, I was, well, prior to Thursday, I was called by one of the civic associations, and I invited all the civic association, whomever they wanted to bring with them about garden basins. We had the developer there, we had his attorney there, and we did invite anybody that was associated with these associations to come, so it wasn't like it wasn't any medical help, so if you didn't hear it, it wasn't my fault because the only reason we could, the only way I could do it was invite, I invited Mrs. Wells from the First Ward Civic Association, I invited Mrs. Hall from the Bungalow Park Association, and anybody else that they wanted to bring. So we did have the developer here, and we did have an attorney here to explain what was going on with the garden basin, and I took that upon myself to try to get as many people as I could, but I went through the associations, and that's what I supposed to do. So I do want you to know, if there wasn't a meeting there, Shabazz was there, and it was very well, I was hoping that, you know, you would hear about, so, yeah, so thank you.
Before we move the agenda, if my colleagues can go through these resolutions of recognition and identify the people who are not here, and we can group it into one vote.
532 is not here.
532.
I don't see time to name.
All right, so what time is that?
That's 531. The Director of the Library is here though, for Bill A22 and Assembly, Assembly 222 and Senate 2171.
So anyone else is there?
Franciscan Sisters are here.
Or is this just a resolution that does not necessarily, you know, individual, like group those together?
487 and 484 are not here, Mr. Chair.
44, 47?
And Second Baptist.
494 here?
Yes, she's here. Dr. Bunny is here. She's doing the STEM presentation, Mr. President.
And lastly, is anyone here, first name, 493?
493. I'll take the second, I'll take that.
All right, so we're going to group 484, 487, 493, 495, 531, and 532.
How about, is someone here for 488 for National Recovery Month? Okay, so that'll be, okay.
Move it.
Little bit, second.
Resolution grouping will include 484, and that's a condolence to the family of Gertha L. James Motley. Resolution 487 recognizes Burleigh Gunter Moore on her 93rd birthday. Resolution 488 recognizes September 2017 as National Recovery Month. Resolution 493 recognizes the African-American Islamic Summit. Resolution 495 recognizes the Second Baptist Church on its 135th anniversary. Resolution 531 recognizes the Atlantic City Historical Foundation, and Resolution 532 is a resolution in support of a direct high-speed train between Atlantic City, Toms River, and New York City. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbetts?
Yes.
And Council President?
Yes.
That's nine of the affirmative. Council President, would you like to continue with the STEM presentation, or shall we continue with recognition?
We'll do the recognition.
We have Resolution 492, and that is a resolution recognizing Angela Burton on occasion of her birthday.
Move it. Say it about here, say it about Marsh.
Whereas Angela Burton, longtime resident of Atlantic City, will celebrate her birthday on September 8, 2017, and whereas Angela Burton, renowned singer and performer, has been an ambassador for the city of Atlantic City, traveling to over 30 countries to perform for our armed services, and whereas Angela Burton is a loyal and dedicated employee of the city of Atlantic City, she is a pioneer and promoter of local talent. Through her music, Angela encourages the unity of the family, and now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Atlantic City hereby congratulates Angela Burton on her birthday and wishes her many more years of health and success. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbetts?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine of the affirmative, and we do have a presentation. Happy birthday, and I love your music.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Thank you, and I've been blessed to sing in 35 countries for our truth. Thank God, and thank you all for loving me.
Can we get some assistance from the administration table? Could we set the podium back to where it belongs, so we can mark the base council? Paul, we had able-bodied men down here.
I guess that's what he wants, I want to...
Here, let me just slide this back. Want it in the middle?
We'll reach in and lift it back in a minute. This microphone is in the middle there. If anyone wishes to...
Is it square?
Get a leveler, level it.
One more function to the able-bodied men, just in case we're under attack, I really would like to see those ropes move right there.
I thought you were saying they attacked whoever jumps was.
The ropes, yeah.
We're looking on swine to attack in case they jump across.
No, no, no auto-tight will pay either.
What's that?
All right, we're ready for the next one.
I thought Mr. Page was going to help us out. We directed, we tested, we directed.
We have Resolution 494, and this resolution recognizes STEM, S-T-E-M, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, Saturday, and the Academy of American Engineering and Science of... And the Academy of American Engineering and Science and Robotics.
Now move it.
Move it.
Move by Randolph.
Second.
Second by Kurtz.
Whereas the American Engineering and Science Robotics Academy will hold STEM Saturday from September sixteen through November eighteen, two thousand seventeen, at the Worthington Campus of Atlantic Cape Community College in Atlantic City. And whereas the STEM program geared towards science, technology, engineering, and mathematics prepares local youngsters for careers, and this learning is necessary for the preparation of future success. Whereas STEM Saturday has been developed into an institution which serves a need for academic enrichment and career development with students from grades K through three and four through twelve. And whereas robotics, engineering, computer science programming, robot competitions, three D design and printing, and digital video lab will be included in the curriculum among other subjects necessary to achieve proficiency. And whereas Dr. Basilin Bunting, a certified systems engineering professional and a certified robotics instructor, founded Friends of American Engineering and Science in February two thousand eleven. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Atlantic City hereby recognizes Dr. Bunting and the Friends of American Engineering and Science for their outstanding work and commends their mission to develop and expand STEM Saturday and STEM education in Atlantic City.
Move it, second.
Can we be all council?
You think they already did all that already?
Can we be all council, devil council?
He's a little jumpy tonight.
He's the first council person.
You gotta make history somewhere, right?
Of all council, we have Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Thibett?
Yes.
And Council President?
Yes. And while we're doing, we can get right into the presentation.
Okay, that's nine of the affirmative, and we have a presentation.
Congratulations and thank you. Charlie, Charlie, what's your campaign sound? I wanna thank you for this resolution. It's just, I always feel uncomfortable because I'm getting awarded for something that I have fun doing, I love doing, okay? And I wanna thank the councilmen for inviting me to talk about my favorite subject, science, technology, engineering, and math, okay? And you're still here, you're still standing. Most people fear that idea of STEM, of STEM, science, technology, engineering, math. I am a product of Lang City Public School Systems. I attended Atlantic Community College, Stockton University, University of Penn, and Stevens Institute of Technology. I am a certified system engineering professional. And I worked for thirty years out at the FAA, W M J Hughes Technical Center. And I know all of those capacities, as a scientist, a technologist, engineer in math. See, I am STEM. In two thousand eleven, I started upon thinking about retiring from government. I started the um nonprofit Friends of American Engineering and Science. Do y'all wanna sit down? If I was to change, switched, I would've sat down, sorry. But I thank you. I started Friends of American Engineering and Science with the mission that we would develop the next generation of scientists and engineers. See, where I came from, I understood that technology was moving very rapidly. And my fear at that time, in two thousand twelve, when I retired, was that our kids would not be able to catch up. There would be a technological gap that's hard to close. So the way that we achieve our mission is that we expose children to twenty-first century technologies. We make sure that it's accessible and available to underserved and underrepresented kids in grades K to twelve. Some of the activities, STEM activities that we give, and by the way, all of them are Common Core certified. They meet the, well, they correlate with the Common Core standards and also the next generation of science standards. But there are three D design, computer science is my favorite, robotics, kids love robotics. We do drone technology, renewable energy, we do renewable energy, and we do flight simulators. We also take kids to um First Lego League, where that's the largest robotic challenge in the world, in the nation. My staff, my technol- my technology staff, technical staff, are local students. Because local students, they are, they have a world, a twenty-first century worldview. They adapted this very well. And therefore, they can transition it to younger kids very effectively, more so than say, some folks like my myself. I tell the kids that, I took computer science in the eighties. That's where my worldview is. On a good day, you might find me in the nineties. But then, because I'm stuck in the nineties, then I challenge them. You take over and you integrate twenty-first century technology into it. And that's the beauty of my job, because then I get to learn from them. We are offering, we have several programs that we offer. Oh, let me introduce you about my staff anyway. They're high school students, they're graduates, undergraduates, undergraduates and graduates. Some of them go to Rowan, ACC, Stockton, Temple, majoring in physics, civil engineering, computer science, John Hopkins University, where they're majoring in computational math. They become positive role models for our children. Like I said, they have a true interest in STEM. They motivate me and they motivate young kids. So this fall, we have in the flyer that you got, the package you had, is for our STEM Saturday. Now STEM Saturday is a program that lasts ten Saturdays. The STEM Saturday in the last ten Saturdays. And kids can take, for this semester, we are offering computer science where kids actually get to do game design and to design apps. And that's a one-hour course, activity, for ten Saturdays. We also do robotics, that's our most requested, is our robotics, where they, kids build, program, design robots. And then, and they get an opportunity to carry out missions, program the robot to do missions that are problems that NASA has, like go retrieve a rover. Do they have to get the robot to do that or collect the moon rocks? So it's all like for kids. We also have a new computer science program where it's all game-based. Kids believe that they're playing, they are playing games. But this here will allow them to earn badges and also earn certification in computer programming from Carnegie Mellon Robotics Academy. They're really excited by this. Why I'm excited about that particular course, another activity that we've gotten involved in is internships. We've had two of our junior engineers do internships at the W M J Hughes Technical Center. One was high school and one was undergraduate. We want to see that more kids get out there. So we're gonna focus on building up their STEM resumes to make it more, more enticing to FAA to hire them. We want them to get these certifications to put on their resumes. Now, I know some people are fair for STEM, but let me tell you, I have like, I K to three. Their STEM resume already states that they can build a robot, they can program a robot, they can maintain a robot, design a robot. That's on their resume already as a K to three. We give out certificates so that they will always have that. And that's parents that hold on to those certificates because the kids will know that that's part of their resume. So you might be saying, well, why should I do STEM? What's the importance of STEM, I hear a lot about it, but why? Three reasons. Globally, the U S needs to develop more scientists and engineers in order to keep its technological advantage in the world. We're the leaders when it comes to technology, but other countries are producing scientists and engineers at a faster rate than what we are. One of the problems, just one, there's many problems that are creating that, is that white males who normally go into science and engineering aren't going in that path anymore like they used to. So we really are looking for, the country's looking for more minorities and women to fill that gap. And I think there's quite a few minorities in the STEM, but women still don't feel comfortable about getting in, it's that stigma. This is for boys, this isn't for girls. So I hope by my talking to you that you'll go back and encourage girls to get involved in it because they really need it. On a national level, there's a robotics revolution that's going on, which is the fourth industrial revolution. What's happening is that you have commercial applications for robotics. Domino's Pizza now wants to deliver your pizza to you by driving this car. You probably know about, Amazon wants to use drone technology to deliver its packages. And it goes on and on and on. Fast food, they have to design the robot that will make a hamburger from, from ground beef based on your order. It will slice up the tomatoes, slice up the pickles, and whatever condiment you want and put it on your plate. You might never ever have to interface with a human being. McDonald's in Phoenix also have an entire robotic operation. And in that robotic operation, they only have three people. So that means more robotics, that means less jobs. The job market is gonna definitely change, definitely change. They only have three people, but I can tell you this, the three people they hire for that job, they all will be able to say, I build robots, I've designed them, built them, programmed, maintained them, and operated them. And that's why we do STEM, to prepare kids today for tomorrow's workforce. Now locally, why you should be interested in STEM for our kids, is the FAA Technical Center where I spent thirty years. Now let me tell you, there's very few local people that work out there. Most of the people at the FAA, W M J Hughes Technical Center are from all across the country, but very few are here. Why do we want our kids out there? There will be a need for STEM people, for engineers and scientists. They will, if they have the skill set, they will get the jobs. The other thing is that you have the research park. That's gonna generate even more engineering firms. And there's gonna be a bigger need for scientists and engineers. Right now, the W M J Hughes Technical Center might not even know, but in this robotic revolution, they're gonna be competing against other agencies for that small population of STEM people. So there will be jobs, jobs for our kids right here in their own neighborhood. They don't have to move anywhere, right here. You have some very good colleges here, ACC, that's where I started. You can go to Stockton and then up north Jersey, there's Rutgers, Rutgers is right here. So our kids can take advantage of this. One other statistic I wanna tell you about is the Department of Labor. They have stated that, and I, and they, this number has been adjusted higher. By two thousand twenty, we will need two million computer programmers. Two million. We will only be able to produce five hundred thousand because. So that means one point, one point five million jobs will be out there. If our kids have the background, the skill set, those are for their taking, they're for, they're taking. The, what's amazing, the five hundred thousand, that's based on our current structure, educational institutions. And I thought when I saw that number, that doesn't sound right. But why, why it is like that? Ninety-five percent of the high schools across the country do not have computer science. Computer science and math is the, are the keys, underlying keys to all of engineering and all of the science. So if you don't have computer science, the robot revolution won't be, you won't be involved in it. You'll be outside of it. And that'd be sad, to be outside of the robot revolution because it will affect every career path that's out there. If it's, if you're gonna be a lawyer, there's law to litigate, laws to litigate. Probably you'll get some of this stuff right here in your council meeting. Because robots, laws are built, are made for people, not robots. So those are the reasons why we should be interested in STEM. In closing, I would like to say that, well, thank you for the resolution. I want to thank in particular Councilman Shabazz for arranging for us to be at ACC Community College. I would like the city to support STEM, send me more kids. And also have a conversation with ACC that you want STEM in your community. And I don't have a problem with you saying we want Dr. Bunting to do it, okay? The other thing is building up a pipeline, kids come in, build up their STEM resume. We'll look for internships for, for them. And perhaps even the city engineering firms now can have our students, local students, participate in internships at their firms. So those are the two things, but send me the kids, send me more kids, okay?
Dr. Bunny, how, how many children do you have that's local, Atlantic City kids as a D?
Atlantic City kids that I have that are in the junior engineering. I have maybe about, about three. Three, and, and I mean, these are top junior engineers, you know? They're, they're in civil engineering and also computer science as well. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I had to set this down.
And the reason I ask, maybe the two hundred and fifty thousand that the mayor program had for, for. ACCC, maybe we can use a portion of those funds. Potentially use, maybe hit fifty to a hundred local kids to participate in that. And I have to pay because I'm looking at these fees. And although we know that everything costs, and we wanna make sure every kid have opportunity where we can find our. um, where we can find ourselves helping from the city standpoint, if we have money set aside, or grant money set aside for, uh, uh, continuing, I think that this is probably a poster, um, opportunity to allow, uh, some youth. Thing that struck me was that we have the ability to have third graders have a resume. Do you know what I mean? Like, think about, think about where they will be if they were to basically stay with you until sixth grade. God knows what they would be actually become. So, I think that that'll be a great opportunity to utilize those funds for at least fifty to a hundred youth in Atlantic City. And, um, if we can get a commitment from the administration to do that, um, I think that'll go a long way, helping folks, because a lot of kids don't have this money, and I think that that's money well spent, that we do have on hand to make sure kids get an opportunity to participate in, um, in their further, further in their education specifically in STEM where urban centers aren't really, um, apt to give them that much STEM. And, um, although we have a few, uh, schools in Atlantic City that do STEM programs on Saturday, I think the more the merrier.
Yes, I, I couldn't do any more. I love what you're saying. I hope it all works out if I can help to, um, make that happen on here. And yes, when it comes to like the K to three, being at ACC, parents tell me, "On Saturday mornings, when kids wake up, I'm going to college." And I'm like, "That's what I want from the state."
That's a prerequisite, see?
I want them to say that. So, that's why ACC is like the best place because it's right here.
Right.
And, um, ACC, since it's a county school, it doesn't have, they have to accept everybody.
Okay.
Have to accept everybody.
Mayor, um, since we gave ACC two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our money in its scholarships, doesn't necessarily mean a senior can get scholarships off this to learn to cook, that's been done, um, regular high school kids coming out of, can't, can't we use the scholarship money to send kids to scholarships for a program like this since it is ACC already?
Actually, Councilman, you didn't give the money to the college. The funds come from MGM.
Yes.
And the mayor, the president of city council, and a representative from MGM determines where the money is. That's where the three million dollars that are missing came from.
Yeah.
The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, when I was mayor, along with the council president and the representative of MGM, went to the county college and is available for any resident of Atlantic City to attend the county college, including a, a STEM program.
Okay, well, that was what the question was. Can we use that scholarship money and have kids go get that scholarship money as well as if we need more money, we get it from that, that, is there, there's money still left in that account, correct?
Three hundred thousand initially.
Three hundred, how many million?
Two hundred and fifty thousand, I raised another fifty thousand.
No, 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 no. How, we had, it originally started out with five million in that account.
MGM fund.
The MGM fund, uh, that's...
Five million, three million disappeared.
Three school one plus two fifty.
And I think a hundred thousand went before I became mayor for the program.
So, there's roughly a million and a half left in there.
Correct.
And the question being was, these little kids can get scholarships to ACC as well under that program, correct?
The fund can be used for anything that benefits Atlantic City residents.
That's the question.
Can I use to the city, but it could be used for anything.
Hey, because let me tell you, um, you know, my kids, I pushed, you know, I'm a grandfather now, so my kids, my boys, I pushed on construction, so I build these buildings to protect your robots and your computers, to keep them dry. But now that I have granddaughters, I get scared what the future holds for them. And when I hear programs like this, this is the way of the future, is robotics. And, and, I mean, uh, you can see, they don't want to pay workers fifteen dollars an hour to work in, uh, in McDonald's no more, so rather than pay them fifteen dollars, they want to replace them with the machine. And when I hear programs like this, it really gives hope and inspiration because I agree, our schools aren't, as of right now, I don't feel our schools are prepared for what the next couple generations of robotics are coming in. Everything's going to be some type of robotic, uh, programming, fixing robotics, uh, you know, everything you said. I'm computer literate, I stick with computers, and I build things. But, you know, I, I'm glad to hear a program like this is something we should all really push to get these kids, uh, an, an advantage to, 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 to the robotic industry.
So, Councilman Khalid, may, maybe you can get together with, um, Ms. Bunney and, uh, reach out to ACCC and start to actually, uh, get the ball rolling, this will allow at least fifty of our youth in the city to participate in a program like this.
Councilman Gilliam, you read my mind.
I mean, Dr. Bunney, before you invested in your future, before, um, you said, I wanted to give you some positive affirmation because earlier this year, I came to your display there in the lobby at Atlantic Cape. And not only your program, but it was evident from the students that you had doing the demonstration of the robots, that, um, that not only do they get it, but they're becoming immersed in the STEM culture, which as you know, and you mentioned a lot of great points, but just to add one, is that, um, it's so important for this to be, take place on a Saturday because the project-based nature of STEM is such that when you incentivize the kids, or the young, young men and women to, to do this, um, and do it on a Saturday, it's tremendous. And, uh, there were two that I met, and they were, they were very impressive, um, and I, I definitely enjoyed the demo and keep up the great work.
Oh, thank you very much, I'm glad you came.
Just for clarity, if I'm not mistaken, you had a program at MLK that worked with water robotics, correct?
We started with, that was the first robotics program in Sea Purge.
That won national accreditation?
Yeah, well, the Sea, yeah, the Sea Purge, I think it was Uptown Complex, they won awards, uh...
But our local children, yeah, I know one gentleman that graduated from that program that was part of that championship team, from a national standpoint.
Yeah.
Nationally honored in STEM, coming from Atlantic City. That speaks roads of what I'm talking about. So, I'm, I'm very supportive, very happy, and I see the, the product. These gentlemen who were part of that program, young ladies are now in the university stage right now in the STEM programs and sciences now, so I love that, and it's continued perpetually.
And most scientists and engineers that I've met, and myself included, we were introduced to STEM early on, and that's why it's important to do K to three, at least start with K to three. But, um, um, no, we'll take four to twelve, I need the older ones because I need them to come back and be junior engineers, and we do pay our junior engineers, we pay them.
We sure could use an engineer right now to fix that sound issue.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We have Resolution 496, and this is a resolution welcoming the Franciscan Sisters of Renewal to Atlantic City.
Move it, Mr. President.
Move it, Mr. President.
Second.
Mark Randolph.
Whereas the Franciscan Sisters of the Renewal was founded in nineteen eighty-eight, and following the teachings of their patron, Saint Francis of Assisi, lived vows of poverty, chastity, and obedience. Atlantic City is home to various faith groups for its residents, and whereas the charitable and evangelical efforts of the sisters is well-known and has been celebrated in New York City, and whereas the Franciscan Sisters of the Renewal have established their first home outside of New York in Atlantic City at the former Saint Michael's Church rectory, and whereas, according to the Sisters of the Order, they have taken up residence in Atlantic City to be presence of Christ's love, light, and hope, and whereas the residents of Atlantic City derive great solace, relief, and hope from the practice of their chosen faiths, and whereas the sisters' arrival in Atlantic City represents a positive and uplifting development in the revival of this city, and now therefore be resolved that the city council, the city of Atlantic City hereby acknowledges the great work of the Franciscan Sisters of the Renewal and welcomes them to Atlantic City. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, and we have a presentation.
Just a, a few short words, just to thank you for recognizing our community and our presence here, and on behalf of Mother Lucy and our community, we're really grateful to be here in Atlantic City and look forward to, um, seeing how the Lord's going to use us, and, um, it's a joy to bring the simple gospel message of Jesus to all that we encounter, all those we meet, so, thank you.
Okay. Well.
Is your cell phone stuck in there in quiet?
It's not there, right?
We have Resolution 512, and this is a resolution of condolence to the family of Senator James Whalen.
All right, move it.
Move by Gilliam, the city, by Shabazz, make it all count, Councilman.
Whereas Senator James Whalen was born November eighth, nineteen forty-eight, he departed his life on August twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, while preparing for a television interview to promote his beloved Atlantic City. And whereas Senator Whalen devoted over forty years of public service to Atlantic City as a lifeguard, educator, council member, three-term mayor, assemblyman, and state senator. And whereas Senator Whalen had an unabashed and well-known love for Atlantic City. And whereas Senator Whalen was responsible for Surf Stadium and had a leadership role in the construction of the Walk and the new Atlantic City Convention Center. And whereas Senator Whalen established his reputation throughout the state of New Jersey as a dedicated, honest, and progressive public servant. Lastly, he successfully advocated for Stockton University's Atlantic City campus and the relocation of South Jersey Gas Company to Atlantic City. And whereas the benefits of Senator Whalen's stellar career in public service will leave a lasting and significant impact on Atlantic City, Atlantic County, and South Jersey. And now therefore be resolved that the council of the city of Atlantic City desires to pay tribute to the life and legacy of Senator James Whalen, and hereby extends heartfelt condolences to his wife Kathy and the Whalen family. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Council President?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. Resolution 528 is a resolution to support the Atlantic City Public Library's capital improvement initiatives and support the bill A two-two-two slash S twenty-one seventy-one.
Move it.
Second.
Move by Shabazz, second by Randolph.
Whereas the Atlantic City Public Library has a need for capital improvements for physical improvements and technological updates, and whereas the New Jersey State Legislature has introduced bills that would authorize one hundred and twenty-five million in general obligation bonds to finance capital projects in public libraries, requiring a one-to-one match from the municipal, Hoover County. And whereas the bills would permit a public referendum to be placed on the general election ballot, asking the public for their approval to bond for public library capital needs. And whereas proposed Atlantic City Public Library capital needs would be a benefit to the citizens of the city of Atlantic City, and now therefore be resolved that the council of the city of Atlantic City hereby supports the Atlantic City Public Library's initiatives and support for bill A two-twenty-two slash S twenty-one seventy-one. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Council President? That's nine in the affirmative. That concludes our recognition resolutions. That brings us to public comment on good and welfare. Joseph Palillo.
Counsel, uh, for good and welfare, can I get a half hour?
Rest of time.
Wide awake, wide awake. I got twenty questions. I saw where, uh, Whalen's, uh, next street name thing was postponed because I was here to speak about that. I don't think you should use the word lame, it's weak. I think you should leave the word boulevard on it, and it should be Whalen Boulevard. I live on that street, and a lot of other people live on that street in Chelsea Heights, and they want the name boulevard to remain. They're not against it being Whalen Boulevard. So, I think that's probably why Mrs. Whalen wanted it postponed, but you should rethink it and name it stronger and better. I'd also like, uh, make a resolution to, uh, change the name of Richard Stockton University to Richard Summers University. I'd also like you to name a street after John Palillo. I have twenty questions, but I'm not going to ask them here, I'm going to wait for the The mayor debates are October third for the First Ward, October twelfth for Dante Hall with W O N D, October sixteenth for Venice Park and the West Side of Martin Luther King. And nobody, even a council president, is going to restrict what I have to say at any time at the council meetings. You get that? Are you paranoid? Why were you so, say, you said somebody's going to attack you here? Didn't you say that?
Mr. Palillo?
What?
You're not going to address him in an attacking fashion, so continue your discussion. Uh, because you have made allegations against him, I'm going to take over in terms of addressing you. So, when they ask you to continue, I've taken ten seconds of your time, so continue.
What allegation did I make against the individual?
Just continue, sir.
Okay, you're a lawyer that doesn't defend the Constitution here, right? And these are the lawyers that don't defend the Constitution here, right? For free speech. Nobody's going to restrict what I have to say, right? So, you're just blowing smoke. And I didn't make an accusation against him, I was explaining a situation. And all you do here is pass resolutions, "I like that guy, I like this guy, I like that." Why don't you do some government work? Thank you, and see you at the debates.
Tom Forkin?
Don't scare anybody.
Good evening, um...
Sort of, are you scared? Are you scared?
Yes, I'm, I'm very pleased.
Okay, this isn't cutting into my time, is it? In any event, I'm here to speak on, uh, Resolution 480, uh, concerning Gardner's Basin redevelopment agreement and lease management agreement, uh, with Scarborough Properties for Gardner's Basin. Um, being a previous business owner in Gardner's Basin and resident on, uh, Massachusetts Avenue, I have a problem with this. And the problem that I have with this, many of my friends and neighbors, uh, in the First Ward and throughout Atlantic City have businesses in, uh, Gardner's Basin. Now, you know, I've addressed before this council the various, uh, breaches of the master deed that the present, uh, operator has, um, down there without the holiday festivals or festivals of any sort, losing the seafood festival, uh, and other festivals that are required in the master deed with the city of Atlantic City, I addressed that a couple years ago. But my main concern is, and, and listen, I know Sean Scarborough, he's a good guy, we surf together, he's got some great projects, he's friends with my family, um, and he does some wonderful things. However, with that said, the problem that I have with this is that there's, it's public property, there's been no public, uh, input for the plan. Um, I was unaware of meetings, um, that took place, it wasn't, to my knowledge, advertised publicly. I know a number of the tenants are here, uh, many of whom are residents. Uh, I, uh, Greg Wood, who owns Fishheads, is a resident of Atlantic City. Kyle and Jane Williams, that, um, own the Back Bale House and Scales, are also residents. Uh, Les and, uh, Les Cameraman owns a business there as well, he is a resident. Um, so my concern is, what's in it for the residents? As a condition precedent to any lease consideration, a condition precedent should be to maintain those businesses in Gardner's Basin as they are, including the art shacks. Now, I've heard, uh, legal arguments on both sides, why the art shacks or sheds have to go. You know, I hear a lot of talk about trying to make Gardner's Basin like Baltimore Harbor. We can't even make it like Tuckford and Seaport. I mean, there's no Christmas lights back there, there's no festivals, and that's problematic. You're losing... Losing the art sheds, and my understanding is a number of the leases are expiring this year, so this is almost like the perfect storm. So how do we protect the resident business people? It may save two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in the short term, but residents, and we have, I believe, what is it, twelve-hundred signatures? Twelve-hundred?
Fifteen hundred.
Fif- over fifteen-hundred signatures that are going to be presented to you tonight from residents, from business owners, from tourists that patronize the basin. And I still have a small business in the city and I live here, and, you know, I am asking the board to make that condition precedent, to pull this tonight, to not vote on it, and protect the resident business owners of Atlantic City. Is that my time?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, if I may. Mr. Forkin, I heard what you're saying. And just for the audience here and the audience at home, it's important for everyone to understand that the question of the lease of the crafters is not a question that is in the purview of the city council. Now, if you want to ask the opinion of the colleagues on the dice, obviously everybody can express their opinion as to whether the crafters should be there and how we feel about it. Of course, all of us are local and we feel strongly about that. But it should be known for people who are listening and following that the question of the configuration of the businesses at Gardner's Basin is a question that's decided by the National Parks Service. Wait, wait, let me finish, I'm... Mr. Forkin, I'll let you speak. We want to edify people. Everybody has a right to express their opinion, and everybody has a right to be heard, but we have to base it on facts. And we have our lawyer here, Kathy Ward. We've been working on this for a year with the lawyer, with the legal system, with our committee, I mean, the legal division. So we didn't just jump up and say, give it to Scarborough. We had an RFP process that we went through, and Scarborough and another vendor responded to the RFP. It was vetted by the planning director, by the legal department, by the Planning and Development Committee, then presented. So we have, and we've been doing this for almost a year. In fact, next month, October, will be a year that we have been involved in this process, working with the National Parks Society, uh, Service, I'm sorry, the National Parks Service, working with Green Acres. So if it was just the fact of saying, do we want the crafters to stay here, let them stay? I'm sure the council, I won't speak for my colleagues, but I don't think anybody would be against having local people stay there, would be nine to nothing. But that's not how it is. It's not even a close legal question with regard to what the National Park Service has the ability to do and why we're here. So the question is now, what do we do? We've already went through that process, we've already been back and forth with these agencies at the state and the federal level for a year. The question of the ability of crafters to stay there is beyond the pale of the local board. Yes, it is.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Let's, let's, let's understand this. The public has its opportunity to speak and everyone up here has their opportunity. No, no, I'm saying, Mr. Forkin, I mean, you know better than most because of your experience and dealing with the city, being a former solicitor. One of the things... The law respects it. We're not going to entertain a back and forth debate that's mentioned at the beginning of the meeting in the council room.
Especially I just wanted people to understand, we have our lawyer here, this...
Point, point well taken, yeah. Next.
Darlene Lee?
Hi, guys. My name is Darlene Lee. I live in the city, I've been here seventy years. I help the people down at the Gardner's Basin, all the little shacks, if they need to go to the restroom or go get a little something, eat or something, I watch their stores because they know everything is safe with me. These people bust their tails to keep these stores open. They don't charge an arm and leg for their merchandise. The people that have Gardner's Basin are charging them on their rent plus mercantile and refusing to let them stay open after paying their licenses and everything. And it's not fair, it's not right. This is their livelihood. What would they do if they didn't have that? A few of them are quite old, they might just, hey, I can't do nothing, I'm going to sit here, what am I going to do, die? You know, it's a damn shame. These people have been here going on eight years, never with no problems, no fights, no pleas, no nothing. Now, all of a sudden, everybody wants them up and out, why? That's what I want to know, why? Can anyone answer that question? Why do they have to leave? Why?
I, I have a question for Mr. Cunningham, because I've read where someone stated that the state was the reason that the folks weren't getting their lease renewed, is that accurate?
Councilman Tibbet, I believe...
Councilman Gilligan.
Here's my Councilman Gilligan. I want to apologize. I confused your name, I think there's a little confusion, which state entity? I don't believe it is the Department of Community Affairs, but anyway, it's my understanding it's the Department of Environmental Protection. I haven't had any...
It's Green Acres.
Which, which is Department of Environmental Protection. So I therefore can't speak to the particular environmental regulations, but I have a point to assist your agency.
So, so my question is, when, when these vendors began to vendor and when Flying Cloud was there and all these other entities were there, what was the environmental issues that allowed them to continue to actually open and be available to the community? So my question and concern is, based on reading the article in the press, what are the environmental issues? Because I know that we had several meetings with Green Acres and they said that it was okay for what they had in place, but they could not move and change any of the things that they had in place moving forward. So if you can actually help us have some clarity on what DEP is saying and what Green Acres are saying, because I have yet to hear, and maybe you'll surprise us or not, every time that we basically do something with a park, I believe it's four times the square footage or the acreage that the city has to find to basically take the place of that. I have yet to see that in any of the documentations as to if the basin is going to become something other than what it is now, where is the city going to basically make up those qualifications or those regulations that Green Acres forces the city to do when they basically convey a park or something over to a private entity?
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I was going to say, with your permission, so that Ms. Ward come up?
Yeah. We have both attorneys, attorneys for, Ms. Ward, would you come up? This is our attorney for the city. She can give us the explanation.
If I can, let me just address, there's a number of issues there. So this, just to put this all in context...
Ms. Ward, could you identify this for the rest of people to know who you are?
Is this on? Is this on?
No, it's, it needs batteries every, probably it's going to last once a month.
That's just reports.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll talk, I'll talk them out. I'm Kathy Ward, I'm an attorney from Stradivarius, which is a firm in Cherry Hill, and we have been working, I've been working with the city for quite a while in Gardner's Basin. And the reason I was, I first got involved is because there are a number of violations of the major regulations that have been, been there for a while, and they are still, these violations are starting to affect the city's ability to get grants. Every time we submit an application for grant money, the state says, well, you've got these violations, you need to resolve them, what are you doing about that? So it basically came to a head when the National Park Service got involved, that's the federal government. They have a similar process and programs to what Green Acres oversees, and basically Green Acres also administers the federal government process and program here. The National Park Service got involved because they did an inspection and they found that there were these longstanding violations that needed to be resolved. Those violations arose out of some uses that were put into effect that benefited the park but were not in compliance with the federal program. Green Acres was even allowing them to go on and not really bothering us too much, but National Park Service said they, they had to be stopped. And one of them was the art sheds. And the reason why, and we fought this, was because the federal program only allows outdoor recreation, that's it. It doesn't even allow indoor recreation. The aquarium was a violation. To have any more than one restaurant was a violation. So we had a number of things that we had to address. And we told them, we said, look, we'll, we will change, you know, some of the sales at the sheds because maybe we'll do things that support outdoor recreation. We'll do things that have, you know, National Park Service branded items or something like that, and they said, no, that was not acceptable. So it, it's been a very long and discouraging process with the National Park Service. The best we could do was to get them to allow us to keep the sheds open this summer, they wanted to shut them down in the spring. And that was, that was the only extension that we got. Now, the reason that the Flying Cloud was allowed to be there is because that pre-existed the grant money that we got from the National Park Service in the seventies. So anything that was there at the time was allowed to stay, so...
But the sheds came after Sandy, after the Flying Cloud was down from Sandy.
I, I just have, I have grant monies. How much grant money does the basin receive from the federal government to date?
Oh, it only received one grant, and it's my understanding it was about three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand back in the seventies.
And, and, and so if, if the federal is saying that they're not going to give us any grant money, and they haven't given us anything since the seventies...
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's the state. The state is the one who's telling us that if we don't fix the violations...
Now, this, this is, this is where I find it very discouraging and very disrespectful to local business merchants.
Yes.
All of these things arise when a developer wants to participate in taking some, some kind of interest in the basin, right? Because I remember...
You got ratted out.
I, I, I remember you, Elizabeth, myself, and a few other people sat with, and, and Councilman Tibbet, sat with Green Acres.
Yes.
Green Acres had no issues. The only issue that they stated that they had was if the basin was going to move forward to try to change and do something newer than what it was originally asked. But that, that, that's not really my, my major concern. My major concern is every redevelopment concept that goes on in the city supposed to have public input. And I've heard my colleagues as well as other people state that public input was invited. I do not think that has ever happened. I do not think that it was put in the press of Atlantic City to give the folks or the merchants or even some of the residents of Atlantic City the opportunity to come and chime in on what they would like the basin to become. That is a process that you know that has to happen in order for any development to move forward. That has not happened.
It did not have, I was not at any meetings, but it's my understanding that meetings did occur.
No, I'm, no, what I'm saying is, and I'm, and I'm not here to dispel anything you're saying, I'm simply saying, based on the merchants and based on residents of Atlantic City, and based on what you're supposed to put in the press to allow folks the opportunity to come in and give their in, insight, every development that has ever happened in this city, for some odd reason besides this, has not basically reached the public opportunity to give input. That is a very important component, because if you begin to move and not give the public input, that becomes something other than democracy.
So you, just to be clear, you're talking about the redevelopment project, not the, not the shutting down of sheds, which is not...
I'm talking about the whole gamut. I'm saying that when someone has an interest, and we're, and we're talking about Gardner's Basin in this particular perspective, that redevelopment, whatever it is, supposed to have the ability of the community to come in and have input and even learn and figure out what may be going on, on the basin, right? Because I also find it disrespectful for merchants to have to read the paper and hear that they're closed. You have people who actually invested really a good amount of their money, I don't know if it's their savings or not. If those things were in place and the city had intentions, and you guys said you've been doing it for a year, when people came before you and asked that they can have an opportunity to open other entities at the basin, and they put up more than five thousand, more than ten, put significant money up, I find that disrespectful and it's bad business.
I, I would agree with you, but for the fact that the foundation was completely involved in this all the way along, and they have been communicating with the shed owners.
No, no, no.
I, I saw the letter, I saw the letters.
We never received...
All right, excuse, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, as, as I stated earlier, everyone have their three minutes to speak. This is not going to be a public debate back and forth, will you please respect the rules of the channel?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just want to say...
No, no, you, you spoke already.
All, all I'm doing is trying to speak for the people who actually have basically stated that they wanted, they wanted to be partners with the city of Atlantic City. And every time I go up to the basin, specifically during the summer season, it gives me great pride and great joy to see how many folks participate and understand that Atlantic City isn't dead, because you can easily see tons of people, music, folks traversing in and around there, and it has life. But what I don't understand, how come the process has been different with this particular project? It has not gone through the public process in terms of allowing the press to run a, to run a ad asking people to give their input. I've heard, this is the second meeting, that I've heard certain merchants say that they were unaware. Everybody can't be lying, and someone has to be open and honest about how the process may have basically fell through. And if it did, let's go back and fix it before we move forward, so at least the public can have an opportunity to chime in and let folks know that their voices do matter, whether we move forward or not, at least allow them to have their voice and their opportunity, because I find it almost un-American to say that you cannot give courtesy to merchants who put money in. Some folks just opened up this year. Does the city actually pay their money back?
It's not the city they're dealing with, it's the foundation.
Irregardless, the foundation's a partner of Atlantic City.
But, but Councilman, I think you should, just for a minute, I hear what you're saying, it's important for people to understand that we had a RFP process, and the RFP process, request for proposal, was no different than any RFP request for proposal process that we've had, since I've been here.
Now, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Could you please show me when and what date that that RFP went out, because I don't recall it even going up to a process.
Councilman, it had to go out because we had people responding. They couldn't have responded if we didn't put it out.
You can respond, because if you make an area, a, a area in need of redevelopment, you do not have to go out.
But Councilman, maybe I didn't make myself clear, I apologize. We had a RFP process, and we had people who responded to the RFP process. Now, it's, it's public record, if you want us to pull the public record, we can do that.
If, if I can have that...
I, I can give that to you, because I was, I was directly involved.
So did that go out?
It went out November sixteen, twenty sixteen, and we had two bidders.
Okay, that went out...
I'm sorry, October, I, let me, I retract that. It went out October sixteen, twenty sixteen, and we had two bidders, and it was publicly advertised as per our legal requirements and legal department's speakers. This was no different than any...
Okay, I, I can agree, I, I appreciate... Okay, I, I, I can agree, I, I appreciate that answer.
Yes, sir.
How long was the, how long was it on the street? Was it two weeks? Was it thirty days? Was it sixty days?
Whatever the standard process is, Mr. Solicitor...
I'm not sure what the standard process is.
Wait a minute, Mr. Solicitor, can you inform us?
Typically, they're out ten to twenty days, I don't recall how...
This is over thirty days.
Over thirty days?
But is that any different, just so people understand, I don't want people to go away with wrong understanding. Is the process that we followed for this RFP any different than the standard process that the city follows?
Um, no, it was exactly the same process. We were required, I mean, the court's office was very clear about what we had to do.
With, with one exception, no public input.
On, on which part?
On the entire redevelopment concept of the basin.
Well, we, I just wanted to clarify, only because the redevelopment concept and the designation was done years ago, it's my understanding, so...
To whom? If it was done years ago, we wouldn't need to be voting on a redevelopment agreement.
It was designated as a redevelopment area years ago.
No, I'm not saying is it designated as, I'm saying...
That's all I was just trying to clarify.
I'm, I'm trying to, all I want to know is that the public have an opportunity to chime in on this redevelopment agreement.
The public process for, for RFPs was followed. That RFP public process does not require public meetings. Does that answer, I'm not sure?
No, 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 re, re, any, if, if I'm wrong, and I'm not attorney by far, but doesn't every redevelopment piece that goes through the city has to have public notice? Am I right or wrong?
Well...
I'm, I'm not, no.
So, so...
If that's up to the city council to...
Well, no, you, let me, let me just, let me just step in. Yes, things are supposed to be notified to the public, but we haven't always, when it came to development and redevelopment, followed those rules. For this situation, it was a public RFP, and that's where we are, so, thank you.
Mr. President, can I ask one question, Council President? You did the redevelopment agreement, Mrs. Stone?
No, the redevelopment agreement was done by the Kiesa Law Firm. I did the lease and management agreement.
By whose law firm?
The Kiesa, well, the Kiesa.
Um, Mr. Shabazz, were you aware that the redevelopment agreement was given to us at five o'clock today? Were you aware of that?
At five o'clock.
That thick?
I, I wasn't aware, but I, I believe that's...
And this was given to us on Mon, uh, Tuesday, that thick? They had a year to do it, I have less than forty-eight hours to read it.
Mr. Tippett, you're very prolific, you can get that. This is really...
No, I'm asking you, were you aware that Kiesa, and I've just gave that to us right now, to vote on a redevelopment agreement? And, and the reason I bring this up, we got, we got tricked and we got screwed over before with the Kushner project. If you remember, the Kushner project had stuff like this presented to us all at once, and in the middle of that project, they took away the reverter clause. While we have the problem that we have with Kushner, so I like to read line item by line item, outline it and everything else, and I don't want to be an obstructionist, but I just want to bring it to your attention, that this was just given to us at five o'clock today, and you're asking to vote, which I don't know if I'm for or against it, because I really don't even know what the hell's in it, to be, to be honest, and, um, you...
Excuse, excuse me, we weren't, um, we weren't asked to vote on what he gave us today. This has been, this has, this has been delayed since the last meeting, and the foundation wanted additional information, so I wanted, this is not going to compel me to vote yes or no. This is only delayed from the last time when they wanted more information. So, I, I don't, I don't think it's very, it's right to say we give this five o'clock today, we have to vote on it. We were asked to vote on it the last time around, just some extra stuff that came.
But without this, though, Speed?
But my whole...
Last, last meeting, you had a lease, you had an ordinance asking you to vote on a lease and a redevelopment agreement. Unfortunately, they forgot to put the redevelopment agreement in last month's package. So, how do you come and vote on something with, for a lease and a redevelopment agreement, and then you only have a lease in front of you? So, I understand what you're saying, but you're mistaking, because we never got this at the last meeting, and that's why it was pulled, because you only had a lease. It said to vote on a lease and redevelopment agreement. You only had the lease there, and you didn't have the redevelopment agreement in the package.
Mr. Tippett, we did have the redevelopment agreement.
Nothing you didn't.
Yes, we did. We had the redevelopment agreement all the time.
Since received September one.
Since the date of twenty seventeen. We went over this when we awarded Scarborough...
We could check their bills for when they billed four hundred and an hour, and it's going to show that they didn't have it done.
Let me chime in, uh, one second, please. Uh, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any knowledge of this documentation?
There you go.
There you go. Well, first of all, by Council President, I mean...
I'm saying, just...
Personally, or for...
Yeah, just, and, and, and you talk to me, it's coming from the Kiesa, but we know that you don't receive, but that any knowledge...
Right, and...
I have no...
Why, it's just being received.
No, I, I try, I, I guess... Aren't you supposed to approve the council package? You yourself, or someone from your office, before it comes to us?
I don't think so.
Oh, I thought that's why we were only having one meeting a month, because we couldn't get the stuff from the state fast enough.
No, it's, it's that, that's for the pack.
Councilman, this was in the package over Friday. And, and I've looked at, there is no substantial change.
I checked with the clerk's office, they sent it to my wrong email, and I got it Tuesday morning.
Oh, okay.
It's, uh...
Do we know it?
All right, let's, uh, let's move on, next, thank you, Adam.
Council, Council President, can I make a motion? I, I'd like to make a motion. Not...
Sorry, you have, you have to suspend rules to get back into the table.
I mean, it's possible, that's what I want to do, but I, I withdraw my half-formed motion. Excuse me.
Charles Goodman?
Good day. It was going to be my summation in terms of that one meeting a month, but now, everything that just transpired speaks to why just one meeting. I heard somebody just say because of the state stuff. It's not necessary, one meeting, you see, we'll be out here eleven o'clock tonight, and just one meeting a month. Guys, I realize it's a part-time job, but you're talking about twice. Your, your only dedicated responsibility is to be here twice. Well, I'm just, I'm, 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 the, all the other stuff comes with the job. I'm talking about public, right? You, you, you're taking, Mr. Marsh, you're taking my time a little bit, but, excuse me, excuse me. I didn't, I, that was going to be my summation. I was going to start off, this is proactive. Um, someone, I appreciate, Council President, that someone monitors this private sanitation. And when I say monitor, every four months, at least get the bills, you know? We're going to have cost overruns, we know, we're going to have change orders, we know, all that comes with the territory after the bid, we know that. So, we want to, we got a three-year deal we got to live with, but at the end of that three years, during the time of the first year, you spent this much. So, when three years are up, it's no question as to what should be done, because we shouldn't be scrambling around like we're doing now, at the end of three years. Let's have it every four months, and I appreciate it to be a part of the council agenda, so that we get that. Uh, uh, next agenda, because I got to go fast, on those trams on the boardwalk. Man, I walked down the boardwalk, tripped about eight times because of the boards. Do we get any money, uh, uh, other than what they, they percentage that they require? Do we get any set aside money to fix those boards? Or do the, the board people on the board, they, on the, that work the boards from the city, do they get overtime for fixing all of those? So, then it's going to be a cost factor to the city. So, there again, I would like an answer on to those trains as far as the, the boardwalk goes. Next thing, this private, and Mr. Tippett, I ask you to pay close attention, is this private, uh, giving bus service to the county. Reason I said, Mr. Tippett, is because he's the one up on what the county tries to get from us. So, we're going to turn over our, we're not, we're going to, we have already turned over our county services, bus services. I spoke to, my sister happens to live in the building where you guys came, uh, uh, you went last night, and she called me. I spoke to the gentleman, the supervisor at the county bus, two weeks ago, and he said Atlantic City's going to have to follow everything, every other municipality. No more calling up, "I need a bus, uh, uh, tomorrow to go here." No more calling up to say, "I want to take the kids next week somewhere else." And you know what the county's going to do? Next year, next year, on the percentage that they asked for, when they asked for thirteen this year without all of this, they're going to be asking for fifteen, so you're going to settle for fourteen, so they get four more points. So, uh, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Thomas, I'm sorry.
I apologize. Uh, this, this takes two seconds. I was going to ask, uh, uh, Councilman Spotty to do a, a resolution, uh, uh, on the basins of Howard University's big rig, but he said, uh, Councilman Marsh, uh, uh, was against it, so, anyway.
We'll take care of that. We'll take care of that. That'll be done next meeting.
Council President, Council President.
Hell to the back.
He, he, he brought up something, that's true. Do, do we know what changes in, um, senior services? Will they still, will they still get the opportunity to, uh, go to the supermarket and things of that nature? What changes have occurred? Because, um, the seniors are very concerned, and they don't know specifically, um, how this impacts them.
All the services will remain the same. In fact, they'll have more access to services than they have now. Uh, they have additional vehicles that are more reliable than what we have. Uh, shopping will be the same schedules. We're in the process now of putting together flyers for all the seniors, so they'll understand what the availabilities are. They'll also have Saturday service for dialysis treatment, which they don't have now, so...
So, so, very good, so, if, and, and I heard you say something that's important. Going to educate them and going to talk to them, because they're seniors, and change for them can sometimes be very scary. So, if you can actually go into those buildings, specifically all the senior cities and high rises, and give them a level of comfort that they're not losing anything.
Absolutely.
Something I caught you said there, uh, they're going to have dialysis on Saturday, um, that they don't have now. They should have had it all along, Atlantic City being the highest payer to the county in taxes, is something that they should have been getting all along, uh, since, since we pay the most. Just show another example on how short change the people of Atlantic City gets from Atlantic County. You look at those meals right now. You, you ever see those meals on wheels, ninety cent meals that they put in that cardboard? It's, it's that.
And, um, speaking of transportation, one of the other key things, and we were able to work it out, speaking of, uh, the, the youth portion of it, um, the city is still going to maintain a bus, and they will have personnel available, so our children won't be shortchanged, for an example. Um, we will add in with the Atlantic City Dolphins, uh, heavyweight games, the city is still going to be able to provide a bus to transport our children here, and so we're not completely out of the transportation business, because as you know, a lot of employees in other departments, they are equipped with various forms of CDL license, that we can be able to transport, uh, kids and women to different events, so...
So, Councilman Smalls, so, so we're going to not sell off some of those buses that we have, just so we can keep and make sure we can do those things? Because I know that, um, we sold our health, um, mobile, so I think that just, just so we can make sure that we have access to those buses, not to sell some of them that, the junk ones, the junk ones, we can, we can go ahead and give them...
I can't speak to any intimate discussions as far as selling things, but I know, uh, the information that I've articulated to the administration, to Director Finch, that not only do we need to have a bus on hand, but, you know, we need to, uh, maintain our vans and, um, different fleets of vehicles, just in case we need them to transport children or, you know, you never know, emergency situation, we have storms pouring in Atlantic, so that was my discussion to them.
Council President, I'd like to add also, um, just the, the fact that we're, we're keeping it for our youth is extremely important, because a lot of our children participate in sports events that, um, go beyond our own present borders, and they've been very successful in competing, so it's necessary that all our children have access, not just a few. So, it's extremely important, and very supportive of that. However, what I've learned is, unfortunately, from having conversations with senior citizens, is that some of the services that they were once getting, they're no longer receiving anymore. Uh, being able to go out and recreate, um, being able to take them to a movie or to a museum, things like that to help, uh, provide them more expansive quality of life. Uh, and I think we also need to have that in the backlog with the county. If they're going to do this with the, the city itself, let's make sure that all our seniors are treated in a high priority like all the seniors are in the county are supposed to. I know that, the, I have someone that I know that works in the county level for meals and wheels, and these individuals that I know, the two people that I know, um, really care about what they do, and which is an essential thing to have, to have people that care about what they do. Let's ensure that our folks, our seniors, don't get lost in the fright. Whatever we can do.
And Councilman Delgado, I can assure you that, uh, that's not happening, speaking of personal experience, um, my boy, which is the second ward, has the most senior buildings in the city, and my friend is constantly bringing, and Director Finch has done a great job of accommodating all seniors, um, you know, best of life, went to the Philadelphia Art Show, so, um, our seniors are still, uh, getting around, you know, on requests, it's just the fact of, you know, communicating, you know, where they want to go, and I've always been sure that if they had a bus, we would go, so we've been good at that.
All right, next.
Linda Brandon?
Um, I came here because my son died July the twenty-seventh, at a house on Memorial, I'm sorry, um, at Fort Chino One Memorial Avenue, right off of Tennessee Avenue. And I didn't, all right, on his death certificate, they have that as his residence. It's not. My son lived on Murray Avenue. Here's his one medallion, he left out his second one September the third. He drank and he relapsed of alcohol, and he relapsed with drugs within four days and died at this house, Fort Chino One Memorial Avenue. When I went over there, it was disgusting, smelled of urine, the people were scary, they wouldn't give me any of my son's belongings. I effed him out at five, they didn't tell me till Sunday after the, the twenty-seventh. I came out from church, and the police were waiting to tell me my son died. At many jobs, my son's been incarcerated, because he was a drug addict for stealing and then going, it took them four days, their child, to find out who he was, after he was left in that room for two. There are four by four rooms, no windows, no vents, and no air conditioning, nothing. And they pay eighty dollars a week. I don't know a lot about code enforcement, but I heard a lot here tonight, that this, I don't understand how it exists. So, when I finally did get this guy, said, "All right, you can get his clothes," I left some of them there because of the bed bugs, I didn't smell of urine. He didn't want me to touch anybody else's things, I might take something from there. And to be, I went to the vote, the tax establishment, and I got these people's name, um, the house, but I wanted to know if it was possible, if anyone could tell me, why do they have these houses? We're trying to stop drugs. I know it, you were at the last hour of one more, stop drugs. So, everybody's working to do this, but they're allowed to have houses like this? And there's a lot of people that live in these houses, they're like this, you know, four by four. And I asked him, I said, "Well, not only did my son get left abandoned there, I feel if he were to overdose in the street, he'd had a better shot. Somebody might have said, 'Call a cop or an ambulance.'" Okay, he said, "The stench is what made him look in that room. Not the man who go in the door, he's on the right." So, I brought my son's death certificate, if he needed to stay, it has that as his residence. It's not. And what?
Sorry to hear, sorry to hear about your son's loss, how close is with your family? Director Finch, he'll speak with you in a hallway about the situation.
Pardon me?
Director Finch, he'll speak with you in a hallway about the situation.
Oh, oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you know, that place was last week, we inspected it with the police department and code enforcement people, and there were numerous arrests, and we're going to proceed with trying to, uh, close the place now, so...
All right. All right. Next.
Alexandra Singh?
Hello, my name is Alexandra Sorgen, I'm one of the artists at the...
I'm one of the artists at the Gartner's Basin, Crafters Village. Um, I'm here tonight to ask for your support and your guidance also in the eviction problem we are facing. My, we, we started a petition and I have over fifteen hundred signatures. I brought it all with me. My first question is, is there any chance for us, for the crafters, for the Gartner's Basin to be saved? How many more thousands do we need for someone to actually listen to us or care about it? Um, and if there is no chance for us, is the city have any plan for the Crafters Village to be moved somewhere else where the city has land or no? They just, we're just gonna disappear. I also have another questions, question, I'm sorry. The shops got Merckentide license from Atlantic City, valid until summer two thousand eighteen. We did get an email stating that we have until September thirtieth to remove everything from the shacks, but we have to stop selling on September fourth. Why is that? Since we have a Merckentide license until summer two thousand eighteen, how we do, how we bother anybody? Since we're still gonna be there until September thirtieth, why we are not allowed to sell until September thirtieth? Why we had to stop yesterday? Um, that, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Council President, I have a question for, I don't know if it's Ms. Ward or maybe Mr. Swan, but something, just listening to the different people talking about Gartner's Basin. Who is it that is issuing the order to terminate these leases with the crafters? I guess that would, that would be my first question.
Jack Howard from the National Park Service. And I, and I can give, uh, contact information for him because I don't think, I, in all of our discussions for the, over the past year, I don't think anyone's against the craft sheds. They, we think they bring an element that is very nice. I've bought things from them, so, I mean, we all support them. Um, there's no reason why they can't go directly to the National Park Service, present their petitions, maybe get some, you know, support and see if they can get an exception. And we tried.
I mean, I know just the nature of the issue in this, this gathering tonight, that we have to kinda use the syntax like us and them, but I mean, maybe like together, we could inform them with information to help them build their case to the federal administration about this regulation and hopefully involve our congressman. Because following this issue between, you know, some of the restrictions that my colleagues were mentioning at the state and federal level, I mean, bottom line is it's ridiculous that we're tripping over these restrictive allocations of acreage that overlap with one another and we have this attraction which is, you know, wonderful. And I could say somebody that's supportive of this redevelopment agreement, seeing it's something, something that we wanna do to not only keep what's there, but to build on it and enhance it. It just seems like, until this moment, it wasn't clear to me, cause I thought it was a DEP, honestly. Matt, so I thought it was somebody, and I, actually initially I thought it was somebody from Mr. Cunningham, so I apologize publicly. It's, it's all good there. Uh, but, you know, it's just, it would be nice to add some clarity from our legal team to kinda boil down the issue. So that, that's the first thing. And then the second question I have is, am I right in assuming that these are separate issues? That the issue of the crafters lease and whatever type of business rights they might have i- is a part and almost distinct and not even affected by what we're trying to do with the redevelopment agreement in Scarborough?
Correct. Those sheds can stay, they cannot stay in terms of the redevelopment agreement itself. It doesn't impact that operation. In fact, in our conversations with, uh, with the redeveloper, he was willing to, you know, he was contemplating the shed staying there until we were given the, the order that it was.
Okay, and lastly, I guess maybe Mr. Tarver, and I'm sorry to put this on the spot, Mr. Council President, but I, I urge my colleagues to do a resolution here and now to Mr. Howard and, and address it also to the congressman, saying that we think this restriction is ridiculous and that we'd like to get some type of federal relief to continue the type of business that we have here. Is that something that we can do?
You can do whatever you want to. Leave the votes safe. You can do that.
Well, I, I'm making a motion then to, uh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that on, on behalf of the crafters, uh, we wanna urge, uh, Mr. Jack Howard, the National Park Service, and any other relevant federal agencies to lift these onerous, uh, restrictions on our local crafters and the development of Gartner's Basin.
Ms. Ward? What have a motion?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Your motion was, uh, that you would urge the, the city council would urge Mr. Jack Howard.
I think the word is ridiculous.
Or any other.
I'm fine with that being.
May I make one suggestion?
I'm in the middle of a motion. We gotta have discussion.
Well, I was trying to get the wording that you used first. Can you repeat the wording that you used? Uh, Mr., the, the motion that would urge Mr. Jack Howard or any other agency involved to reconsider their decisions with regard to.
Ridiculous and onerous.
With regard to the merchants.
The federal, the federal restrictions on existing businesses such as the crafters.
I, I don't know if there are federal restrictions on businesses, that's why.
I mean, that, the. Okay, I'd like some guidance from our legal team to express my sentiments which are here, to put it in legal ease.
Let me just, I, Ms. Ward, perhaps she can give us some.
Yes, if I can just clarify, because we have, the city has a pending application before the National Park Service, which we don't want to jeopardize.
Now, time out, time out.
Yes.
Who, 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 who reached out to the National Park Association?
Service.
Service? That they have an interest in garden basins? Out of thirty years or however long, how did all of a sudden this become, this, this got on the radar of the national?
I will tell you how it happened. Somebody from, who works for the National Park Service, vacationed in Atlantic City and saw the park.
And then said, what, I see this park and all of a sudden this out of compliance?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, about three years ago, someone who works for the National Park Service, vacationed in Atlantic City, saw the park, realized it was federally, over, under federal oversight and called for inspection. That's how, no one called them in.
And so what are, what are the actual, what, what are the actual violations?
Okay. We, um.
Can I, can I just, we're in the middle of a motion and I just need to get that wording so that we can complete the motion and then we can go to the discussion portion.
Okay. Yep, uh, because we have an open application right now. I need a mic.
Just, we're speaking to council.
Because she has an open application.
Um, if, if the city could support, um, the efforts of the, um.
Crafters.
Crafters, thank you. Um, along with, uh, the support of state and federal representatives, I think that would be less onerous than saying that the city is, um, you know, leading the charge on it.
So we have a, we have a, we, we've applied for a grant?
No. We've applied to get back into compliance.
All right, I guess maybe I'll clarify. I'd like administer, I'd like to seek, uh, seek administrative relief from the relevant federal agencies. I guess maybe that would be a way not to offend them.
No, you wouldn't be looking for that.
I withdraw my motion. I just want, for the members of the public, I think this thing is ridiculous just because you have something that, that people do a very good item that is relevant to the maritime and the fact that somebody from the federal government would come here and vacation.
All right, um, excuse me, there's too much discussion going on.
May I, may I draft something? Would that be appropriate because?
I'm withdrawing my motion, but thank you very much for offering. I appreciate it. Not on my behalf.
Listen, if he's withdrawing a motion, that's, that's more forward, please. I'm wishing.
I, 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 forgive me, I, I, I just need to have some, some clarity for my own standing here, right? We're trying to get back into compliance with the national from thirty years ago.
Forty-seven.
From, from about nine, the nineteen nineties, that's when we got out of compliance.
Right. And because we are out of compliance, that prohibits the city from getting or doing what at the basin?
It, it doesn't, it is, since they did the inspection, they have been calling us and they've been, they have refrained from, uh, writing an actual letter. But we do have communications from the state that, that, from NTS, um, that dictate that we are out of compliance and need to come into compliance. So we get fined.
If we don't?
We get fined, we would get fined.
Can we give them their money back?
I wish that was that simple.
Okay.
So, this, this is where I'm, I'm troubled.
Maybe Donald Trump, get rid of that.
This is where I'm troubled and maybe I'll never get a resolution on this. If there are problems and issues with the basin, then we should not be doing any redevelopment with anyone or anything until everything is in compliance.
Well, this is how we're getting in compliance.
By, by giving a redevelopment to?
Yes, let me explain, can I explain? Let me explain how this evolved. Um, the city has no money to do the things that National Park Service wanted us to do.
And what were those things?
Well, we needed to, uh, do, we needed to do something with the aquarium because the aquarium was, was built without approval. Uh, we needed to reduce the number of restaurants, but yet the, the city didn't wanna lose the ability to rebuild where sales was because that was a nice amenity right for the marina.
So how many restaurants are allowed there under, under the compliance?
In, well, under the rules, one.
So what happens?
We were able, with, with our plan, which included what the, the private money that would come in through the redevelopment project, we were able to get two restaurants.
I don't understand. It's, it's, it's too convoluted for my.
I'm still trying to figure out why are we obligated to the federal parks service? Federal Parks was created under, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Teddy Roosevelt.
Yeah, that's right.
And when Roosevelt started, the park service was for federal funds to come in and build green acre funds and what have you into the parks and what happened.
Right, that's what happened.
We have not received any funds since when?
Nineteen seventy-seven.
So in nineteen seventy-seven, have received zero funds, but now we're potentially gonna be fined for something?
Yes.
I think they owe us some thirty-five years of support.
All right, and, and can you let, can you let the public know, I'm, I'm finding a question for you. Who owns the garden?
Who owns Gartner's Basin? The city. It's city-owned land, Gartner's Basin.
We own parks.
Yes, the city.
Governed by federal Parks Association Service that hasn't given any funds since seventy-seven.
And that's not the only park you have that's like that. You have one other park like that.
So that's letting us know again, we're raising up a flag because too many people are involved in the city, mandating certain things that we need to have, but not having a vested interest in helping us to put this together. It's American way, isn't it? Sense it.
Why I always say there's no such thing as free money.
No, that, that's where the.
I thought you retired. I thought he retired. Anytime the rent system's gonna want to elevate it or develop it, would we get that money?
We keep that up.
Stretch, the, the ball, any dirt, anything ball raised. Cause you know, money, the money's in the dirt. Would we get the money?
They don't build anything else unless they grant it. How they pay, they basically pay us the money. They're only making so little money for the money that we're.
No, 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 we're talking about the rent drills, they go to raise it. Do we get the money? The money's all in the dirt.
Right, all right. Members of the board, it's been back on.
Mark Ballner.
Maybe there's a lot of.
Henry, can I screen?
Good evening, council. Um, I'd like to first commend, um, Mr. Gilliam, District Attorney, and, uh, Councilman Shabazz, um, for speaking up for the children in the STEM program and trying to get some money allocated, uh, to those children and try to get into that program. I think that's very important, um, to the development of our children, getting involved in the science. I also would like to commend Mr. Gilliam for stepping up and advocating for the community on this, um, uh, this thing that's going on right here, the garden basin. Um, without you probably saying anything, it just passed and went through and then all the holes that everybody's looking at on Channel Two right now, see what's going on. They understand what's happening. Appreciate you for doing it. Appreciate you for those who are standing up to understand what's going on right now. I'm just saying that the kid, Mr. Kiesa and his law firm, whoever is writing this legislation, people coming out of nowhere, you see what's going on, you know what's going on. The people should be mad at that stuff that's happening, uh, right now. And again, uh, appreciate you for doing it. Keep advocating. Thank you.
Linda Steele.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, Linda Steele, um, I have a question. Councilman Shabazz, you said this process with regard to Gartner's Basin, uh, started almost a year ago. And, um, and my question would be, um, somebody knew that there were problems in this, uh, uh, with, with vending park, that people would be out of, uh, business. In any good faith effort, has the city determined to refund their money because their vendor's license was just issued? They had maybe two months of, uh, operation. I think in all good faith, until this is resolved, people should be refunded their money because they were sold something that they cannot use. And I think it's something that you should consider because I think it's a matter of good faith. And, um, and these are people who have been in the city for, uh, a while. So, um, I think that's something that should be considered. And, um, I have a question about the, um, once a month. I haven't been here because I thought I would give you guys a rest and I needed to clear my head as well. But, um, there are so many things going on and that should be going on in Atlantic City that you need to be working, um, you know, your regular, uh, schedule. And so if you are going to decide, what, what is this period of time that we're talking about?
It's just, it's the remainder of the year and it's for administrative purposes. There are a lot of issues, um, because of the legislation where the state takes fifteen days to remove certain things and things are backed up and it's creating a burden on the clerk staff. So it's pure administrative, remainder of the year. That's it.
Oh, okay. All right, so we're talking three months?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, it just seems like it takes us, uh, a long time to get through, uh, a meeting.
Well, well, just, 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 just understand this. I mean, there's work being done outside these council chambers that doesn't affect your representation for the residents, constituents, or anything else.
Okay. And I, I do wanna commend you on, um, the, uh, services that you're still providing for the, uh, students, uh, the kids and the senior citizens, uh, in the community because, um, they have a hard time. And so, uh, whatever you can do to, uh, continue to provide them services, um, is certainly appreciated by everybody. So, um, please consider, um, uh, refunding if, if you cannot resolve because I think it's just, it's just right.
Still, I'm not trying to abduct your suggestion, I appreciate it, but the, uh, administration of things like that is the administration, it's not the council's, per view. So if there would be a refund administration, we'd have to consider that. Thing would have to be.
Uh, yes, and I can appreciate that. But I think that as, um, uh, the legislative body, uh, communication should be done, uh, because everybody represents the city.
Right.
And, and so what, whatever you do to communicate to, uh, the administration, uh, shines a good light on everybody, not just you or the mayor.
I hear you.
And, um, because they, they, some of them just got their license in, in August. And now they gotta close down? That's not right. That's not right.
Motion, Matt?
I just wanna thank, uh, council, I wanted to thank.
Mark Ballner?
I know.
It's funny, Brian.
Doesn't work. We at Home Initiative just finished our classes back on August the tenth. I want to thank, uh, over at the Always One Building, it was on home ownership. I want to thank in particular Naniel Langford, who really made things happen and when, uh, things occurred unexpectedly, was right there to speak. The other people involved through the Public Works Department was Rodney Marshall, Torres Lattiel, and Terry Jones, who all worked there. And especially in case of Rodney Marshall, the first night, we had a change of plans unexpectedly and he just, I took off my jacket, he just got up and we just got the job done, so, um, I want to thank city council, I know oversees All Wars, and I really appreciate the opportunity we had to be there. I'm right here standing here in village, thank you very much.
Helena Sauer?
Um, I'm one of the crafters at the basin. I appreciate this time given and all that is, it's my favorite. Okay, um, I'm, I, I've been so confused and didn't understand the letter, you know, the email. So, six weeks before we were able to open, it, it landed me in the hospital from stress, three times in the emergency room. I hope something can be done. I think Gardener's Basin is the greatest place in Atlantic City. And I, I hope you can do something to help it. The customers love the shopping there, the sheds, the restaurants, the ice cream place. And what I don't understand is the sheds are permanent structures. They aren't compliant, aren't compliant with green acres, aren't they? And also, um, if green acres applies to the whole basin, why are we the only ones to close? You know, I, I don't understand. I need to do the customers that are coming into the stores and signing the petitions for it. And there are a lot of them, and I, I have a big customer base. For seven years I've worked there, ten, twelve, I was a day, seven days a week, my husband and I. So, I mean, whatever help you can do, I really thank you and appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Norma? Co- Coliker? Okay.
Hello, council, mayor. Um, I live in Bridington. And I was the first one to tell my friend Helena about Gardener's Basin. And we went to talk to the girl that runs the sheds. She rents them all, and she got in there, it's seven years ago. Now, all of a sudden, all this commotion that they don't want them there. They want them out, they want the sheds out, and it's just unbelievable. People that come in, I worked there too, and people that come in can't believe it. They said, this is why we come here, because we love to go to eat and go around shopping at the sheds. And that's why we got a petition together. Is there any way we can have some kind of public hearing about this? That's what I'd like to know.
Any lawyers in the room?
I can answer the question. The public hearing has no effect on the redevelopment agreement. The shed issue is being driven by the National Park Service that has ordered the city to remove them. So, Councilman Kurtz asked, and he subsequently, uh, withdrew, uh, that the city support your application to the National Park Service for an exception. So that's what we can do. Uh, but having an open hearing on it isn't going to do anything because the National Park Service is driving this issue, not the city.
I see, so we have to deal with the National Park Service, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and how, do you know how we go about that?
Kathy can tell you how to do it.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Holly Harold?
Hi, everybody, um, here we are again, a month later, still talking about the same resolution. Um, I'm going to try to be quick so I can try to get it in within three minutes. Obviously, everybody standing behind me is, or most people standing behind me are not happy. They're not happy. I know that the resolution is different than the shed issue, but I think what they're looking for is for you all to support it. They don't know where to go. Um, the lease that they signed is through Gardener's Basin and it's through Atlantic City. Um, I don't think they even realize that when they signed a lease, it had anything to do with the National Park Service. So I think they would like Atlantic City and your support in this, in voting the resolution as no, to move through with the development, to show support for them. And possibly, why can't we as a group coordinate a meeting, even though that you don't have to do it, between people on city council, invite the National Park Service here, so we can have a face-to-face and talk with them? I don't understand why they're up there and they can't come down here and talk to us all about it, as well as green acres, the tenants, the residents. And also, my other question is, why is the Board of Gardener's Basin not here? Um, I would like them to show a little bit more transparency, especially in this whole deal with what's happening with Scarborough as a tenant. And more importantly, is it, I've, even as a city resident, I don't feel like we were properly notified about what type of development there was really going to be and really get our buy-in for it. Um, it's a truly successful area. The people that come into our shop, which is the ice cream shop there, love the shopping. I'm going to tell you, if the, if the sheds leave, I think that you're not going to see as much activity there at all. Unless people come with little kids for ice, for, um, well, for ice cream too would be great. Unless they came for the aquarium, I just think that you're going to see far less population of visitors there. And I do think that an RFP, although the RFP was advertised in the newspaper, I do feel this RFP is different than other RFPs because it affects so many tenants that are there already in place. Um, you know, us ourselves, as I said at the last meeting, we put a lot of money into the business, not knowing that in a year's time, maybe it would be null and void. Um, so I think our, the RFP for this is a little different than others. Um, it's not just a redevelopment of land, it's a redevelopment of people's lives, that, like, these tenants have been there for quite a while. So, my, and my last question, or my only question that I have is, when I did look at the plan for the actual development, which I just saw last night for the first time, um, there is a part of the marina that is not part of the plan, more toward the north side, and it looks like it's more in with the fishing area. Why is that? Like, is, is, are there other plans for part of the marina there? Like, it does not look like all the slips and all the T docks are included in the, in the drawing.
That's actually a very good question because it's, you know, is that usually?
Right.
I don't know why, but that, that was never part of what the National Park Service determined to be part of, Gardener's Basin.
It's not part of the basin.
It's not part of the basin.
Part of the street, okay.
It's actually part of the marina itself, and it's just.
So why we close the street right there and put all the vendors on that? Might just extend it, make a little vendor village back there, propose a street.
I know it's up, vote no.
Paul Harold?
I'm a Atlantic City resident, and let's face it, we all know that Gardener's Basin is a diamond in the rough and it needs to be buffed up and cleaned.
Absolutely.
Obviously, it's a big draw for everybody, the best kept secret Atlantic City. We need to expose it a little bit better, maybe through some advertisement or whatever. But I think that maybe we should have had some more public input involved in the Gardener's Basin Aquarium Foundation. It seemed like a very controlled little group in there and that nobody really knew what happened in those meetings. Being it's a big part of Atlantic City and a part of the big diamond, that I think maybe a little more public interest, maybe a little more public oversight, maybe a little more people involved in the board meetings. Because the board meetings are during the day, most working people can't afford to take off. So maybe if we had a little bit more of a public involvement in the board down there, maybe some of this stuff would have been ironed out before tonight. But you know what, we inherited a bunch of problems that took a long time to create and we're just nipping away at them one at a time. So, you guys are doing alright, I support you.
Josh Starkman?
Good evening, members of council, Mr. Mayor. I run a boat slip at Gardener's Basin, so I have an interest in this redevelopment agreement as it pertains to where I'm going to be keeping my boat, um, during the summer season. I'm also in the boat repair business, so it's important for me to see people have affordable access to the water, the boat slips where they can enjoy time with their families. Um, when I found out about this redevelopment agreement through the impressive Atlantic City, um, that was mentioned in there, I did a Oprah request with the city to see if I could get a copy of this plan, to review it, to see how that would affect me as a tenant at Gardener's Basin. As certain members of council have said, that agreement was not made available to us and it has still not made, been made available to me since I made my request more than thirty days ago. So my question to council is, how will this affect us as boaters at Gardener's Basin? We pay a lot of money, upwards of three thousand dollars a year to be able to keep our boats there. Uh, we contribute financially to the operation of Gardener's Basin. Will we be, continue to stay there? Will the city or Scarborough Properties continue to maintain the marina for us? And will our rates increase substantially? Or will the city issue some sort of price controls to be able to keep this affordable to us? Because as you know, Scarborough Properties owns other marinas where dock rents are upwards of six or seven thousand dollars a year versus at Gardener's Basin, it's three thousand, so it's more affordable for regular people like myself. And those are my questions to council, let's see.
Ask these questions, please. Actually, National Park Service involvement helps you in this case because, uh, there's a requirement that there be a completely blind, uh, or fair process in place for assigning slips and for keeping the rents accessible.
So who will control the margin regarding the basin?
Well, it will be overseen by the developer, but he's got to follow the National Park Service guidelines.
And are those guidelines made available to us so we know if these rates are going to increase?
Well, it's not that there's the, a specific dictation of what the rate should be in terms of actual dollar amounts, um, but there are several regulations in terms of the process. And once the agreement is signed, once the agreement is, is final, um, that agreement's valid.
So no, we're, your developer could raise the rate if he sees fit, as long as it's within the guidelines, but they'll be done.
I don't think that's the right interpretation, no.
Uh, excuse me, excuse me, sir. If you ask your questions, you may ask.
Thank you.
Friends in Action?
There you go, Paul, you get to tell council members. Hello, everyone, hello, council, uh, members in the general audience. I'm talking about Gardener's Basin today. Well, I want to thank you council members for your continued support as we've done a lot of things for our residents in the community. As you know, September sixteenth and seventeenth, with the collaboration of Councilman Delgado, the Multicultural Program, the Committee of Friends in Action, we're going to have an event that's never been seen again in Atlantic City, we're going to do another one. Uh, February, September sixteenth and seventeenth, we will have a Unity Day Weekend. The sixteenth will first commence from four to eight P M. with a bike ride throughout the entire city of Atlantic City. Thanks to Chief White, some of our, our local police officers will be joining us in a bike ride as we go through every ward of like a, a nine-hour city.
Chief White too? He's gonna lead the, uh, bike ride?
Oh, then she can.
He could have told me about it, man.
The, our residents can join us with skateboards, roller skates, and bikes and everything. However you want to use the transport, you know, what, what is, join us as we do this. This ride will be about eleven miles as we go throughout every single ward, so it's going to be, go at a nice even pace. On the seventeenth, we will have the actual Unity Day event. Thanks once again to the Jipney Association. All of our children and parents will be picked up at their school for free. They will be picked up and be brought to Gardener's Basin and then taken back later on. There'll be free food and drink for the residents, with hamburgers, hot dogs, et cetera.
Non-alcoholic.
And non-alcoholic. Thanks to some of our local businesses who are contributing. Yardees, Vagabonds, the Irish Club, Duck Town. They're all joining in with us by providing the residents free hamburgers and hot dogs, one of the factors. We will also have free haircuts for the children and free hair braiding for the girls. Organization called Salvation of Southern Philadelphia is going to come in with a mobile vehicle to cut the children's hair. We will also have free books for adult literacy, getting our parents to read to our children. And thanks to connecting the dots, they will facilitate doing that. Along with that, we have the United Coalition of Union Black Trades coming down to once again help by giving out books and information to the public. We also have, going, joining us, various health mobiles for mental health and also physical screenings of our residents, once again, for free. We also have free games for the children, tug-of-war, jump rope, whatever you can think of, the kids that we have fun, we will try to provide for you. We'll have dueling duck tanks. Thanks to Councilman Timbode, there are thirty-foot water slide. We will have also, and lastly, back to school, where we have to be at two thousand or plus to get the children's school supplies for school. So we want to thank everybody for your help as we do this event for this whole weekend.
Council President, I'd like to expand a little bit on this.
September sixteenth and seventeenth, next weekend.
In addition to all the things that Anthony had mentioned, we will also be holding a on-the-spot, remote wishlist access center through Amazon, um, where you can come onsite and buy from the wishlist that's created on Amazon, uh, items that can be directly sent over to Texas, uh, to Herbie, uh, Harvey Rescue Centers or areas that need specific, need, specific needs in it, not the larger corporations that may be involved or, you know, or using traditionally, you know. There's been a, a, a Amazon wishlist created, uh, from agencies directly impacting the communities inside, or Houston, in and around Houston, that created this wishlist so we can all partake. So we're going to, uh, provide an access, internet access, you onsite, you can make a purchase, whatever you want to, it goes directly to them. We will, all we're doing is giving you an opportunity to help if you want to. Um, in addition to that, uh, we talked about the literacy portion, uh, there's other, there's nonprofit organizations that, that's going to help promote, um, children from the ages of one to three to learn how to swim as a defense mechanism. Um, because unfortunately, living on a barren island, swimming is a must. And we don't necessarily have the resources that we once had in the past and we're trying to do, to revisit those resources so we can have instruction, um, available to our children so no child will be without knowledge of swimming. Um, and to be able to defend themselves, we've, we've suffered some losses in the summertime, uh, this year from, uh, people who have, uh, who weren't ready or able at that time to, uh, uh, get themselves out of a, of a tragic situation. So, we're going to try to do what we can to help support them, uh, move along, move forward. Uh, the, the Unity Day Festival from twelve P M. until about eight P M. that evening, um, we have a long list of, of, of groups that'll be coming in, R and B, jazz bands. We have some kids groups that are coming in, youth organizations that are coming in to perform. Uh, there's more of a focus on local, uh, bands and local instruments, uh, or people who are musicians, um, to give them an opportunity. We have, uh, you know, King Publishing that comes in and they're going to do a scene from their latest play called Shade. They're going to do a live, a live scene there as well. We've had some, uh, interest from some international stars that are considering coming down as well. I'm not going to announce who, but let's just say if you like to dance, you might want to get your dancing shoes ready because there's a lot of dancing involved. Uh, so if everything works out well, we're looking forward to that wonderful day. Anthony had just touched base as far as the Unity Day Bike Ride. The Bike Ride is prior to, it's more so a way for us to commune together as a community of diverse origins, come together as one family. Because so often we've seen in cities like Ocean City and Avalon and things like this, they have these small, fun type of events, parades, boat rides and what have you. And they, and they really proud of just being silly individuals and silly is a good thing at times during so much stress. So for us to come together as a community on bicycles, and bicycles, not motorcycles, that's a discussion that we'll have later on for those that really indulge with motorcycles, right Brad? So later on, that'll be a discussion because I know there's an interest for that. But on this one, it's about bicycles. We thought it, it's a jovial way for us to be able to partake and enjoy the community itself. And there's at times where some of the kids, we, Anthony and I, we call ourselves the low-budget bike club or the broke bike club as we call ourselves. When we're riding around, as people see us, they want to join, and that type of attraction is something that we need to continue to do so. In these trying times where our nation has so much polarization going on, it's necessary for us to unite at every avenue we possibly can. And because we did this same thing two years ago, a little over two years ago, and we did it successfully beyond barriers in a way we never thought we could, we thought it just right to do it again this year. So this event is available for everybody, of course, you've seen all the people who are helping us out. It's coming to the city itself with very little impact to our budget, very little. What I mean is that there always seems to be a cost somewhere, somebody's going to throw a cost or a bill somewhere. You know, they'll probably charge us for the sunlight that's coming in, I don't know, you never know, I'm just being facetious about that. But we are very happy and proud to have our Atlantic City Fire Department coming in, they're also servicing, our police department are involved. So public safety is adamant and supporting this. It's just an example of what Atlantic City truly is, beyond all the facades that everyone else puts up. Atlantic City is a microcosm of the world. And we're very proud, we say we're from many origins, but here in Atlantic City, we're one family. So if you have time and opportunity on the sixteenth, come on and partake in this bike ride that we start at Gardner's Basin. Anthony gave you four hours, but eleven miles sometimes can take a little longer. So we're going to keep riding, you don't have to start at Gardner's Basin, you can jump in wherever you'd like along the path. We hope to announce the path or get it together by Friday, so everyone will be aware what the path is. And we look to have streamers, music, people dressed up if you'd like to, whatever it is, just so you can really relax and relieve yourself of the everyday stress to partake in this, please do so. We are encouraging organizations to make, you might want to inform other individuals, whether it's a health initiative or a social initiative that you're trying to promote, this is a good opportunity to do so. In the midst of doing so, we're also trying to promote a concept that was brought together by one of our team members, Brother Torres Mayfield of Masonic Lodge, Grand Lodge. He's trying to promote Hands Across Atlantic City. This is another vehicle that we're trying to do is unite us as a community. So everyone come together, hold hands, and we all celebrate one another. And the issues and concerns that we have for so many various things, which is child obesity, whether it's sickle cell anemia, anything that's impacting our families the way they are, this is a time when we can come out and celebrate, honor those that are fighting in the fight. So if you have a chance and opportunity to come on down to be part of something grander than yourselves, I think this is a good start. We're hoping that this can continue on, the idea is about bringing the community together. So I really applaud everyone who's been supportive, very proud of my colleagues to be the way they are. Very adamant and supporting us and very thankful for someone like Anthony, always driving through, driving forth, smiling face with the many colored suits, but his heart is golden. And an event like this is an opportunity for you to just partake in, that's gonna, I think, make an investment where blessings come back a million times over our entire community. So thank you for this time, sorry about that, Council President.
Joy Smillenow?
Good evening, Council President and council members. Who chairs the planning and development?
Public Enemy Number Two.
And now I can see why this has happened, because really, Public Enemy Number Two, there should have been a public hearing when you found out that it was, before it went out to bids. The information that was produced here tonight has been very educational and most of the community is able to understand what's going on. They didn't understand what was going on that are out there. We that in the community that don't live in that area definitely don't understand what has happened. It has been brought to my attention from our residents that cameraman who is running for council is going door to door with a uniformed police officer. This troubles me. Why? Because?
Your time is your time, but check the record. I've been a million percent consistent. We want to save the politics in this chamber for the neighborhoods and the civic associations.
We've already went through this with Joe Paloo. No, that's not another issue. Maybe I need to do the same thing. I'm only trying to, I'm only trying to inform the public.
I understand what you're trying to do. And when you came up here before, when you was mentioning...
That was after the election. That was after the election, Councilwoman. But if you let one person do it, then you cannot, you cannot take my voice away from me.
I'm not taking your voice away from you.
I'm taking my voice away from me.
Politics in this chamber, you didn't go on in the primary and it's not going to go on in the general, that's it.
Let me finish my statement.
If it's a political intent, I'm not letting you.
At this point, we'll leave that part out. At this point, we are requesting that Chief White play a role in putting a halt to this kind of behavior. Our residents were also told to give their voter I D. to be copied in order to get a ticket for an event. This took place while I was not here. I am outraged that anyone would make a copy of someone's I D. That is against anything that the N A C P stands for Voter I D. and suppression. Close, let me close and tell the residents this. If you see something, this is what I was taught at the N A C P. National. If you see something, say something. We intend to speak out against any kind of voter intimidation that will affect our community. Thank you.
Let's move the agenda, please.
We now have ordinances on second and final reading. Ordinance twenty-two is an ordinance designating State's Avenue Beach Patrol Station as the Joseph Sykes Memorial Beach Patrol Station.
Madam Motion?
Move it.
Second by Gillian, third by Shabazz. Any discussion from the public? CNN Public Force is closed, discussion called over.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Anything, if anyone's here? If you want to come up and say a couple words?
I just wanted to thank everyone and that my husband really loved Atlantic City and the beach patrol. And really, that's all I have to say, and I'm very thankful he, he loves the city, he loves the beach patrol.
Ordinance twenty-three is an ordinance to provide for historical marker to be erected at North Carolina Atlantic avenues in memory of James L. Cooper Esquire.
Madam Motion?
Move it.
Second by Gillian, third by council. Any discussion from the public?
Yeah, you can if you want.
Thank you so much, City Council, for this honor for a wonderful gentleman, Jim Cooper. Many of you know him, I know, council member Shabazz and near guardian, we're close personal friends. Jim just, he loves South Jersey, especially Atlantic City, where he was born and lived and started his law firm and all the wonderful boards he served on and institutions. And it's so ironic tonight that here we're having all this discussion about Gardner's Basin, which was so much a part of Jim's heart starting the aquarium. And my prayer is that you get everything settled and that whole area, which is, as someone said tonight, a diamond in the rough, but it's really a gem. So please work so hard, continue Jim's dream and keep that aquarium, all the other wonderful things going. Thank you so much.
Our Congressman Counselor?
I was going to say, as you mentioned, Jim Cooper's a personal friend of mine. And in fact, Council President, when I was a young actor, Jim Cooper represented myself, Councilman Rose, who has passed away, and a young man named Jawans Jamal in municipal court, and he won his case. And he got me to do something I thought I would never do. He got me to go down to Mississippi on a plane, there was a Philadel, this place in Mississippi called Philadelphia, Mississippi. And at that time, there was a sister movement, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania and Philadelphia, Mississippi. And I'll never forget, Jim Cooper called me, he said, I want you to go to Mississippi. I said, Jim Cooper, you are my good friend, but I'm not going to Mississippi. But to make a long story short, we went down there on the hottest day that I can ever remember. We went to a remembrance for civil rights workers who were slain in Mississippi, Goodman, Churner, and Cheney. And Jim Cooper was a man who had a social justice conscious before popular, and he kept that throughout his long and active life. And I'm just so glad that we're doing this and I'm glad to have called him a friend.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes. And before we move the agenda, for Councilman Gillian, he said the parking lot is flooding, so if anybody needs to park.
Hey, Council, Council President, real quick, if it wasn't for Jimmy Cooper, there would be no Gardner's Basin.
That's true.
There's a guy that tried to take Gardner Basin away and give it to somebody else. So Jimmy Cooper stood strong and he stood tall to make sure that extended lease was given to Gardner's Basin. And that's why we are where we are today, because he fought hard for that. And just everybody need to know that.
Ordinance twenty-four is an ordinance amending chapter two oh two, parking residential areas permit zones.
Move it, Mr. Chair.
Move by Shabazz, second by Randolph. Any discussion from the public? CNN Public Force is closed, discussion called over.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
No. Oh, excuse me, yes, 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 and it mixed up, yes.
Tibbet, yes, and Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. Ordinance number twenty-five is an ordinance to amend Article One, Chapter two fifty-three of the code, Atlantic City, which regulates towing of motor vehicles.
Madam Motion?
Move it.
Move by Shabazz?
Second.
Second by Kurtz. Any discussion from the public? CNN Public Force is closed. I'm joking, okay? You take my floor.
As you see, I didn't... Councilman Small. Can somebody explain this, if it's in your yard, it's going to be towed? Or how is this towing going to affect the residents?
That's the end of her comment. Be glad to, I'll wait till Madam Chairwoman is finished with her remarks. Proudly. I'll wait till you finish with your remarks, be glad to answer you.
I was, I was going to ask you to say how is this going to affect the residents?
Okay, so there were a number of people who had complained about over-aggressive towing practices throughout the city. And it wasn't one specific complaint, like for example, that you're mentioning a private residence or a vacant lot or a city-owned property, it's actually kind of a combination of all of those. And so in doing some research, the state legislature passed something called the NJ Predatory Towing Act several years ago. And even though it's state law, Atlantic City had adopted most provisions in that state law to our city code with the exception of what you find in ordinance twenty-five. So in a general sense for our citizens, this is adding an additional protection from predatory or against predatory towing into our city code, so that'd be first thing. The second thing is that it brings our city code fully in compliance with the state statutes that were passed in that NJ Predatory Towing Act. And I guess like in practice, like the violation that it would affect is if somebody who has a private lot contracts with a towing company, there's some additional steps that the private property owner and the towing company have to fulfill, which in turn kind of slow down the process and minimize the risk of having this predatory, over-aggressive towing practice, which is in some cases scaring away visitors, it's causing our residents to have to pay extra towing fees when they really shouldn't because there's this state law to protect them. So that would be my answer.
If it's in my yard, yeah, come in my yard and take my car out and tow it.
It doesn't affect private property.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make clear.
The only important thing about that with regard to private property is if you wanted your private property, for example, if you owned a lot somewhere and you wanted it to be protected, the state statutes require, we've amplified in this particular ordinance, that there would be the proper posting at all entrances of the property to say exactly what your regulations are, where it's going to be towed, how you can get the car back and everything else, that's the state statute. But as far as your own personal yard, no, it has nothing to do with that.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion? Called over.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Make the motion and move. Ordinance is on first resolution, excuse me, ordinance is on first reading resolutions and move business. Move by Shabazz, second by Randolph. Shabazz?
Good.
Randolph?
Good.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kurtz?
I'm going to be very quick, Councilman Randolph. So planning and development, these are all cosponsors, Madam Clerk, I'd like to cosponsor five fifteen, five twenty-four, five twenty-five, and five twenty-six. That is all, thank you.
I want to register, no vote for four eighty and four ninety-seven.
I just want to pull four ninety-nine for discussion, please. Oh, I'm sorry, under health.
Do you need all of us here when you discuss?
What's that?
Do you need all of us here when you discuss?
No, I could just say something right now and I... Can I do that? I just want to, I could do that, yeah. I just want to, you know, I looked at a lot of municipalities, I support this, number one. But it's just something I want to bring up to all of you, all these other towns don't wait for grass to get up to twelve inches high and then send a notice out. I don't think we should be giving morning notices anymore. Your grass gets up to eight inches high, you get fined, that is your notice. If it happens again, you're getting fined again. Because this town, our public works, they're doing a great job. And I see them doing, I see them doing a lot of private properties as well and really, I don't like to see that, but we have to get caught up because of the way banks have let properties go. It's a necessary evil that we're on some private properties, but I think people put in...
But I think people put in trash out too many days early. No warning, fine them. We gotta stop the warning process. They do it in other towns and the towns look great. Another thing is, is growing up in Atlantic City here, all our parents, all of us, you know, as little kids, went out and pulled the weeds in front of your own house, in front of the street, in front of your own house. The fact that we're paying all these public works to have to go in front of everybody's house, it seems like anymore out there, because we lost our values of just going out in front of your own house and pulling the weeds and sweeping the gutters in front of your own house. But I'd like to see, Jesse, you bring it through your committee and changed the way, no more warnings. We just fine, we fine, and that is your warning. If it happens again, you're getting another ticket. Because we understand the grass is already super high. By the time you give them 10 days to correct the problem, and if they don't, you know, you're getting the Zika virus all over the place, this is coming down here now, the green head problems from these high grasses. And then you also get the mice and all other type of rodents. And when you do cut it, they scramble for everybody's houses. So it does cause health problems as well. So, you know, I'd like to see us change the way we do that. If it has to be by ordinance, to where we just fine the people and charge them. And if they don't pay, we lean, we put a lien on their house, just like we would a Woodard Company lien or any other type of lien.
On that note, can I just elaborate just for two minutes? I agree with that. And I wanted to say that Director Finch and Paul, we should try to help them because they have been really excellent getting people out, getting that down. But we need to change that number, work with you on that and co-sponsor.
And I guess if, Councilman Tiber, if you have like a particular city you think that does it very well, better than we do, if you'd made like one or two examples, if you could share that before the committee meetings, we'll look at it in committee and we'll ask our professionals and the administration to do the same thing. We'll look at it and I definitely, I'm with you and with Councilman Randolph. And you had asked me actually to look into something last meeting, I forgot, I never got back to you on it. It had to do with the tow trucks. When we were talking about this on first reading, you'd said that we should require our tow trucks to list the company that they belong to, so that we don't just have random old tow trucks going around towing people. And I did, yeah, and we actually already have that in the code. So that's why I didn't come forward with anything. So I just, it triggered that. But definitely, we'll look into the weeds as well, definitely.
480, no. 524, discussion?
You said 524, Council?
Correct. 520 and 530.
520 and 530, with discussion?
Council President, I can record my no votes for the committee, right?
What was your chance?
That was my chance, oh. Okay, I want to vote 480, no, also. I was gonna list my no votes and my yes on my vote.
Okay. So we will be voting on, per reading, ordinance 12A, which has amended. This is an ordinance establishing John C. Kelly Lane as an additional designation for Adriatic Avenue between Rhode Island Avenue and New Hampshire Avenue. That is the revision. Ordinance 12B is an ordinance to provide for additional name and designation to the corner of Indiana and Grant Avenue as C. Thomas Thatch Way. Ordinance 12B is an ordinance to amend Chapter 197, which regulates parades and assemblies. 12F is an ordinance amending Chapter 233, regulating taxi stands. 12G is an ordinance authorizing the dedication of rights away to the city of Atlantic City. Resolution 402, 480.
If I may, 480, can you pull that?
Pull for discussion, 480. Resolutions again, again, will be 402, 489, 490, 497, 508, 515, 516, 517, 518, 19, 522, 523, 525, 526, 429, 486, 500, 504, 505, 509, 510, 511, 513, 521, 527, 467, 485, 499, 501, 502, 503, 498, 506, and new business, 533.
I'm sorry, if there's a way we can pull 497 for discussion as well?
Okay, 497 is also pulled off for discussion. Okay. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes, there's a few exceptions.
Right, I didn't get to the exceptions yet.
480 was one, no. I also want a no on 502, 503. And 497, when you discuss.
So is that a yes? Delgado?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibet?
Yes.
And Small. Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize. Randolph?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative with the exceptions noted. No vote, Councilman Gilliam, 480. No vote, Tibet, 480. No votes for Chang, 480 and 497. No votes for Delgado, 480, 502, 503. Cosponsors, Kurtz, 515, 524, 525, and 526.
Uh, Madam Clerk, it's actually eight at this point in the council.
Councilman, you want to leave both?
Councilor Small has to.
Councilman Squalden?
All of them. Oh, yes.
Nine in the affirmative with the exceptions noted. Okay. I know. Okay, so Resolution 480 was pulled for discussion by Councilman Gilliam.
Madam Motion?
Move it.
Second by Randolph, discussion?
Yes, with all the things that we've heard on the community and all of the uncertainties of the movements around the basin, I would respectfully ask that we pull this to at least allow the public to have some input and also to allow the public who, specifically the merchants who possibly have invested money to end up discussing whether or not there will be some kind of refund of their funds. Because this is something that, I think this just sends the wrong message as to what the city's about in terms of redevelopment. No one's opposed to redevelopment. But we are opposed to when you basically take the livelihood of someone else for someone else's benefit. I just find that it should be actually vetted out a little more. And I just wanted to make sure I put that on the record.
The council is going instead.
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm not, you can speak and say what you want. I'm not trying to actually have you convince me or sway me or anything. It's just that I made my statement and it's not anything personally against you or anybody else. I just wanted to put it on the record.
Yes, sir.
Call.
Resolution 480. Chang?
No.
Delgado?
No.
Gilliam?
No.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibet?
No.
And Small?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, four in the negative. Here we have Resolution 497, this was pulled by Council.
Move it. Madam Motion? Move it. Move by Gilliam?
Second.
Second by Shabazz?
Yes, I pulled this because I'm having a problem with this change order discussion as far as this organization, Triad. Because is it, is it not true that while Triad has been placed, we had to send back excess $100,000 back to HUD because we didn't meet the requirements necessary for it? And in the very beginning, when Triad was first in discussion, one of the things we talked about was, is this is gonna be increasing fee? Is there gonna, are the costs gonna continue? Because the outcome and then the process involving CDVG funds and how it seems to be that some days it moves a lot more expeditious than others, and then some organizations seem to get faster head nods than others. It just brings a lot of questions involved in this. And I'm uncomfortable by paying this if it doesn't, if this system with this portion of this formula doesn't necessarily make it look as to work where it should.
Councilman, can you repeat the first part of your question about the $100,000?
Was a hundred, over $100,000 sent back to HUD because of something that was internally not done while Triad was in place?
So I don't know that it was exactly $100,000, but it had nothing to do with Triad. It occurred on the watch before Triad was under contract. I think it was in 2014 that, yeah. That's my understanding.
Okay. I appreciate your understanding, but I defer, I think it was just recently, not long ago.
So the issue came up just recently, but it was based on occurrence that happened in 2014, I believe.
Where papers weren't necessarily filed in due time since then? Is that the case? Were certain compliance discussions that were supposed to take place never took place?
So I'm familiar with the issue that you're talking about. But again, it was based upon something that happened before Triad was under contract. And as to Triad's change order tonight, the reason we have the need for the change order is because they finished all of the houses that they were originally under contract to do. This will give them five more houses to rehab, or at least to oversee the rehab of by the end of the year. And if they don't use it, they don't use it. But it only, does not extend the duration of the contract, just adds money for them to complete five more home rehabs.
So these monies are supposed to be set up for CDVG funds where people can get renewals or renovations done through the CDVG fund. We're paying them excess funds to oversee the project, is that the case?
That's correct.
Why are we paying them for something that we already have people on staff to do? We have compliance officers, if I'm not mistaken, in our construction department.
So we only have one full-time CDVG employee on staff. Triad is under contract to provide these types of services to assist in our oversight of CDVG affairs.
How is that when we know the CDVG was heavily undermanned? When we had two individuals that seemed to be like drug under with so much work, heavily undermanned, and then we release more people? Because we, I'm uncomfortable with that. I don't like that concept. When we had a system that worked, we had individuals that had long-term understanding of CDVG, all the organizations that were involved, the houses, they even had, they lived here. So they had invested issue or invested interest in Atlantic City. And then we had an organization that was questioned right from the get-go because I didn't see how it works. I didn't see how it would work out to benefit us. And to this day, I'm not comfortable to believe that it worked out to the best benefit for the cost value the way it should have. I don't, I don't, I think that was more a waste of money, my point.
I thought that we hired Triad simply to do the compliance report. How did it morph into them taking, almost taking over CDVG? Because obviously with one person in CDVG right now, it's almost to the point where we've already privatized the CDVG department based on what I'm hearing. Because we originally hired Triad to actually write the compliance reports so that we would not find ourselves sending money back to the federal government.
So they're currently under contract for consulting services for CDVG related affairs. This is specific to their oversight of home rehab, this change order.
But that's, but I understand that, right? So again, to my colleague's point, we had folks in those departments that were pretty much working. And at the time that we basically brought Triad on, their only job was to consult with the compliance of making sure that we basically met certain deadlines so we wouldn't have to send, be threatened to send money back to the federal government. Now, we basically, this is like the second change order for Triad, right? And now that we've learned that there's only one person in CDVG, so the rumors that I'm hearing that we're gonna end up giving CDVG or plan on giving CDVG to the county or ACIA to take over makes it very vivid that that's the direction we're going in? Is that safe to say?
I can't speak to that. But I can say that this does not expand the scope of the services provided by Triad. It just gives them the right to do five more houses before the end of 2017. So they've already been doing this for us.
So may, can someone from the administration answer that?
The Councilman, I'll have to get back to you on that specifically.
I bet you you would.
Yes, I will, sir.
Thank you. When tomorrow? Great, thank you.
Public gets to decide who gets CDVG money. They don't look at the rest.
And I want to let the record reflect, I've been speaking on change orders and championing the fact that our legal expenses are at all time low, under my watch. This has nothing to do with the general fund, it's current monies. This is a program for housing. So I can proudly keep that no change orders message intact, just for the record, thank you.
Ben, how long has Triad been working for, so?
No, Councilman, I'm not entirely sure. Maybe since 2015, I'm not entirely sure, though.
I had one question, how many people were in CDVG prior to this? Wasn't that many at all? Was it more than one?
Two. Absolutely.
How many?
Like maybe like five, six, five.
I honestly don't know.
Somebody at the table that's been here longer than Ben? Anybody with a cup of coffee down there can answer that for me?
I think it was like three or four.
Three?
You have folks that went out and did investigation.
Five.
Doreen?
Five.
She said five. Okay, five. Okay. So when, when did it get down to one?
A department is essential in the rebuilding of Atlantic.
Ben, you can always, I get back to you.
The answer is, I honestly do not know. I'll get back to you. Doreen might be able to speak to that.
Okay, thanks.
She said five, she said five.
I'm good with it.
And I don't know the reason for the dwindling in the department. I think Doreen said one employee is retired.
I think explanation is good, it's just to do five more houses for the end of the year.
That's it.
That's it, this is all it's about.
That's it.
Not by how many people in CDVG.
Get five more houses done before the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But on record, to my colleague's point, it seemed like quite a few of the projects that were done seemed to have some issues with oversight there as well. Where some of these constructs of whatever agreement was made wasn't adhered to. So nobody was looking over those compliances. And it had multiple jobs that had to go with being extended over and over again because they had to get new contractors to get involved to finish these projects that should have been done years ago. So there's a big even hole in communication. And I think there's a little bit more of a comfort to believe that these individuals who made, who should be doing the job, are doing the job, are getting paid to do the job, regardless of where the funds are coming from. I'm just very uncomfortable with this, again, someone getting paid a fee to do something here in Atlantic City, and it just doesn't get that, not in the faction that we need them to do.
Chang?
No.
Delgado?
No.
Gilliam?
No.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibet?
No.
Small?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, four in the negative. We have Resolution 524, pulled by Councilman Gilliam.
Move it.
Second.
Move it.
Move by Gilliam, second by Marsh? Discussion?
The piece is on, um, that they're under, under development now. But your question was, does this affect that? And the answer is no. It's, they're going ahead and they're pushing forward, and hopefully they'll be open this time next year.
So what's the amendment for?
The amendment's for the other piece, they have two pieces of land.
To do what with the second piece?
It's for them to alter their plan in the second piece if they see that the market dictates it.
Alter to, alter to become what? Housing, commercial, or?
Retail, yeah. Housing, commercial, retail, whatever the, the market will bear, we're trying to give them flexibility, and, and I'm glad you said that, Councilman, because one of the concerns people have voiced from the dice is about developers who don't do what they say they're gonna do. They're in the grounds, they're, uh, finishing their project, and now they want the flexibility to do more. I think we should help, and I think it speaks for itself.
I just want you to know one thing, because I ask questions don't mean I'm gonna say no.
How do you say that?
So, so, you know, I mean, I, I, I ask questions for, 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 for a specific reason, not that it's challenging you, and I just want you to know that I ask these questions not for my sake, but for the public's sake, because again, they don't always know the moving pieces.
Councilman, that's why I explained it in an expansive way.
But you know, but you know, I'm kinda slow, so I try to figure things out from the-
I'm slower than you, that's why I explained it that way. Yeah. She said, yeah, right.
She said, right. You guys agree.
This is, this is Marla, from Marla.
Go where Almer, you're gonna be close.
I mean, she tracking on YouTube or something.
She'll fight back.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, let's go.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
That's not in the affirmative.
Anything that actually have CRDA, um, in a, in a government agreement, it leads me to, uh, to worry, um, five twenty.
Okay.
Uh, we're mending that to-
I'm sorry.
We're mending five twenty to do what with CRDA?
Yes, please.
Five twenty refers to the CRDA funds that we have available for demolition. Any, any, uh, building within the district, those funds can be used to demolish the buildings of our district fair.
So, is that-
That's the balance of the account.
How much is it?
It's one, one point, uh, oh four million.
One point four million? Is that money strictly for the tourism district?
Yes.
Only for the tourism district?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we have asked that at times for consideration, properties that are close to the district may have approved it.
So, so, when we have neighborhoods that, on the north side, that talk about they have, um, unwarranted properties, you couldn't actually use any of that for that?
No, we use CDVG for that.
Huh? Do you agree?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, secondly, uh, clean and safe initiative.
Five, five thirty is, uh, the approval of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for three properties on Bellfield to purchase. Um, Bellfield Avenue is drug-infested, uh, we intend to demolish six properties, uh, three on each side of the street that they're doing, and we have to buy three of them to tear the, those three down. So, this is giving us funds to buy those three properties.
So, CRDA is gonna get a city a buck fifty?
Yeah.
Right? To demo three.
To buy, and then we'll use their demo monies to demo.
Okay. And the three that's there, do we plan on limiting those?
We are negotiating now with, with the property owners.
With the property owners?
Yes.
So, are we looking to actually flatten that entire area?
It'll be three on each side, there's eight and six, so we're gonna be three, three on each side of the street.
So everything will be gone at that point, right?
Let me just say for the record, this is not, that you, Councilman Gillian, for the record, Bellfield Avenue is one of the worst avenues in the city.
No way, no way, Councilman.
Yeah. So, I, that's, that's why, uh, we ask everybody to support this, and, and, and the police are doing an excellent job, we need to do that.
Paul?
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
No.
Gill, Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabaz?
Yes.
Tippett?
No.
And Council President?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative, one in the negative. Okay, we have a collective session, resolution five oh seven.
Please.
Twenty minutes.
We have A, New York City, Atlantic City, B, House Delany, C, Tycole Terry, D, Michael Smith, and D, Guy Patenga. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second. Move by Shabaz, second by Marsha?
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
No.
Tippett?
Yes.
And Small?
I'm just following my notes. How many do we have? Yeah, five, come on. I know. If it's not, I'll-
Five in the affirmative.
Cause he's messing with me, he's-
No, because, because Marty says no, that's why.
All right, go.
Kathy, thanks tonight. Ben owes you lunch, by the way.
I don't know what you better get, bet on a dog. We're just quitting my job, and then sue you for me quitting. Yeah, we're all quitting tonight, we're gonna sue you because we quit.
We were, and I think we quit, you know.
It's worn out, damn it. Unbelievable. But you know what, it would've been worth it if you'd have given it up.
All right, we're back on the record.
All right, I wanna make an announcement while we're waiting, um, September sixteenth, Saturday, so they, they were nice enough to bring this flyer around, sustainable down beach, so there's gonna be, um, a couple different cleanups happening through the city, so people who are near, uh, so Chelsea Heights, the corner of Raleigh, and Boulevard is gonna be one staging area for us, um, then they're gonna announce, I think Venice Park, they're setting one up by the old club back that, back there. Um, simultaneously, so start at nine AM, there's gonna be a Lower Chelsea Sixth Ward cleanup, that we're gonna stage at Delancy Park, so anybody who wants to, Delancy Place in the Bay, um, nine AM, show up, if you wanna bring, uh, a picker, and some bags, feel free to, or you can just bring yourself, and we're gonna get the community together, and depending on how many people come up, we'll see how many blocks we can do, we'll try to cover as much of the ward as possible. So that's Saturday, September sixteenth, nine AM, at Delancy Park, and then also this nice, uh, Abseken Island Back Bay cleanup in the waters, uh, ten AM to one PM. Thank you, Council President.
All right, Paul. May I have a motion to group?
Yeah, Council President, um, the three resolutions that should have been on the agenda, I'm told, are not on the agenda, so I'd like to group, um, all three of these proposed settlements, settlement for Tycole Terry, for Michael Smith, and Guy Patenga, in one resolution, and I guess the next in order is five thirty-four?
Correct.
And, um, the resolution will read that City Council approved some of them, I think, um, to reference.
Nah, that's a, that's a done deal.
Yeah, they're done deals. Don't give us credit for those settlements.
All right, um, may I have a motion?
Go with it.
Second.
Chang?
What's your guess?
Delgado?
Yes.
Gilliam?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
No.
Randolph?
No.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabaz?
Yes.
Tippett?
No.
And Small?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, two in the negative.
May I have a motion? Go with it.